I'd like to welcome everyone this morning to our workshop, if you would stand please. We'll have a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I don't see any public input cards this morning, so we'll move right into our topics. With 3.01 was risk management, Tom Mark, Director of Internal Audit.
Good morning, School Board. Can you hear me?
Just one sec. So everyone knows Ms. Luke is on the telephone, she's able to listen to the comments, but she's not necessarily going to pipe in and comment back to us. So that's why the phone is here, so she can hear the conversation. Mr. Mark.
Thank you. Good morning, School Board. Today, I'm going to give you a presentation on a risk assessment that we updated and the revised internal audit plan from the one that I submitted earlier this year. Real quick overview, I mean, only really two things that I just said that I was going to provide to you, but each year I'm provided to give the School Board annual required internal audit disclosures, and I've done this for about the last three, four years, five years almost. So I'm not going to go over it too much, it's just to know that, to let you know that I keep the Internal Audit Department Charter up to date. The internal audit plan is done on a risk-based assessment of the organization. There is an internal audit budget and so forth. So just wanted to do that, that's a requirement of the internal audit standards that I abide by and I follow as a certified internal auditor. With that, let's move to the, to the risk assessment that I've done. When you asked me to do the risk assessment or update the risk assessment, I was following the old risk assessment that I had done about two years ago, not quite, but about two years. And I didn't want to update the risk assessment at this time because we were going through a lot of organizational changes. I think we've completed most of those. I know there's probably some fine tuning that'll be done along the way. But one of the things I wanted to do when I redid the risk assessment was make it simpler. If you kind of, if you can remember, when I did it before, there was about three tabs on the spreadsheet, so you went from the top tab and you had to click down through it to review the whole risk assessment and get an idea of how it all formed up to one. What I've done is I've brought all that together and I put it on one page. And that was my goal, was to make it shorter, simpler, to make it from left to right, easy to review, stayed with the key risk elements, the impact and the probability of risk. And then I did make the assessment simpler. I had a scale of one to nine, I changed that from one to three, one being low, two being medium risk, and three being a high risk. So I tried to make it as simple as possible. So with that, I'll go to the, what it looks like, and I provide, I just put one page up here on the screen, but I've provided to the School Board the whole risk assessment. I think it ended up to be about eight pages long. And it's a breakdown of each division, then in each division is the departments underneath them, and then within the departments, you have the, what I call the components, what makes up, what they do, I guess the key areas of what they do in that department. Looking at the, at the spreadsheet, that's what the first column is, is the division, departments, and the components. And then as you move to the right a little bit, what I've added is the operational budget, and that's just the amount of money that they budgeted to operate that department for the, for the year. And then next to that is the number of staff in that, each of those departments. Then as you move over, the next few areas make up the impact, and then as you move beyond that, the next few areas make up the probability. And those are what is called risk management. When I sat down with each of the chiefs, I talked to them about, you know, what do you do when you get in a car to reduce risk? You put on your seatbelt, you adjust your mirrors, you know, you look in your mirrors, you check before you back up, et cetera, et cetera. So the components of the impact and the probability of risk are kind of those things. It's all the different things that make up risk in, in a department. And if you look at, you know, you have a budget, you have budget constraints. I don't think anybody has an unlimited budget in the school district, and for that fact, any department. So you're restricted by your budget, and that restricts the amount of money you have to spend and do, and also, the staffing also restricts what you're able to do. So you have your normal job all, that you're doing day in and day out, depending on the amount of flow of work, do you have time to go back and verify and check and make sure that everything that went through that day was, was done accurately and to the best of everyone's ability? And you take all the components that make up that, standard operating procedures, training, we have management information systems, how do we manage and operate those on a day-to-day basis? And then, of course, a lot of our departments have laws and regulations, those things make up impact. Those are a few. Those are not by any means everything that could possibly impact a department. One of the things you can think of is interaction between other departments. Sometimes some of your work, you're relying on maybe IT, and if IT is not in line with your department as far as what you want to do, you might have to wait. And that waiting could cause an impact on your ability to get the job done. So then you move over to probability, and then, you know, complexity of the operation. You know, some, some, some areas are more complex to get done. I don't think we're doing anything along the line of rocket science, but there are a lot of laws and regulations some areas have to comply with, and in some cases, that's very complex, especially if you're dealing with the federal government and all the hoops that they want you to jump through. Next thing would be the volume. I mean, some departments have a lot more volume of work than others. I think, for the most, I think everybody has a lot of volume of work. So that, that impacts it, especially when there's any kind of staff restrictions that you may have encountered over the year or over the past few years, and we've known that the school district has, has had that issue to deal with for, for quite some time. Then if you have any known issues, anything from prior audits, anything from issues over the prior years that you've had to deal with. So all these things make up how, how you would view risk. And then, and then going back to the spreadsheet, each of the chiefs went through each of these areas, each of their departments, and then they ranked the risks, one to three, low, medium, or high, in each of these areas. And then that, that, that then rolled up to the impact and the probability rolled up to the overall risk for that department in each of those areas underneath that. This was very much like I did before, so there's not a lot of difference here, other than making it a little bit simpler, keeping it all on one page.
And you graded these, you changed them, you said, and you brought it down to...
I did not grade them. Each of the chiefs graded their own areas.
Okay.
Okay.
So, but still, the, the margin was one to three?
Yes, sir.
One being the highest, two neutral?
One being the lowest, three being the highest.
Tom, what is in the operational budget? Because obviously salaries aren't in here.
No, sir.
What you're naming the staff?
The operation is basically the amount of money that, that you need to operate your department, things like office supplies and traveling, cell phones, all that, all that went into the makeup of, of the operational budget. And you guys have seen that and approved it during the budgeting process. So the staff, that's why I had the number of staff, Mr. Mathias, that's why I had the number of staff there, that kind of gives you, you, we kind of know that by number of people, that that would increase the budget. So, I mean, if you look at transportation, they had 340-some people, I don't have it in front of me, but obviously, they have a $3 million operating budget, plus their, their personnel is 340, I think it was 47, if I recall the number right. So that would be one of the largest departments currently.
Okay, so the department had voted on the, or...
Not voted.
Decided the, the... The department had decided the relative risk of each department, right?
The chiefs, yes.
The chiefs? The five chiefs or...
Yes.
Like, the head of ESE, the head of federal programs?
The head of transportation, Dr. Weiskopf, Mr. Carr, head of operations.
Just those, just those.
Just those.
Okay.
Now, they may have incorporated their people into helping them decide that. They didn't have to, but they, they may have.
She's not incorporating the people.
Okay, okay.
And one of the things I pointed out at the bottom of the one page is, Dr. Wheeler's risk assessment was taken off of this. He's doing his own. If you remember that presentation from the IT auditors that we have for, they, they do a COBIT and framework, and that, that's very detailed into the, all of the IT areas. And the reason why we don't want to include that for presentation here at the public forum is because there's obviously a lot of sensitive areas in there, and we don't want to disclose our high-risk areas out to, out to the public. On page seven, or on slide seven, I guess, it's actually slide seven, what I did was I took all the department risks and I ranked them, top to bottom, and this is how I kind of looked at the levels of risk for, for developing the internal audit plan. And I also sat down with the chief financial officer to review all this. And obviously, the, the first item on there, full-time equivalency, equivalency, I did an audit on that about two years ago, if the board remembers, and we had an audit in 2017 by the, by the audit general, and they, they did have, they continue to have findings. A lot of that has to do with our documentation. So I included that this year on the audit plan to go back in and look at the documentation that they were commenting on, that, that we were not up to speed on, and hopefully finding out the, what we have done to rectify, to rectify that, and hopefully reduce our findings in the future for, for full-time equivalency.
You may want to go back and change that one under that column that you're in there, under department, where it says faculties and design, probably it's facilities.
Facilities, okay.
So, if, okay, if pretty much each head of each department ranked it, like, if I'm doing a, a survey, I generally will go with, if we're doing okay, I go with two. Like, if I, it's a one through three, I go with the average. Then if I know it's bad, I go lower, if I know it's good, I just go as high. But somebody, like, Mark might, um, Mark might be like, no, if we're pretty good, I'm going to go with a, a three, you know?
Three's bad.
Three's...
Three's bad.
Bad, okay, a one.
Three's, three's a high risk.
Three's a high risk.
So like, I see like food services as all ones, and then other departments have a bunch of threes, but are the, is that, if you're just comparing surveys between people, is it really accurate?
It's how likely you want your department audited.
We did not do surveys between people. Everyone would have a different assessment of risk.
And that, but comparing them isn't necessarily a good measure.
In my car assessment, you have that every day, when you get in your car, right? Some people zip down the road like there's no chance of getting in an accident, where others are more cautious.
I, I think, I think that's, that's maybe her concern, and maybe, maybe a question that arises is, if I'm filling this out, and I think, do I want my department audited or not? I'm going to maybe identify whether it's a high risk or a low risk, right? Whether or not I want somebody to come in and be a bunch of extra i's.
Sure. Sure, that could be...
So how do, how do you, how do you norm all that? Or you just run it?
I think, I think you normalize that just by the, the first two, the, the second two columns, the operational budget and, and the amount of people in, in the department. You know, and then, then you have to go by known. I mean, the FTE audit, it did come out high, but even if it didn't come out high, we have the fact that the state auditors came in here and had a number of findings about our processes, so documentation of our processes, I guess.
Is that really what you're focusing on? Is that right? When, when...
What am I focusing on?
The processes.
I do, yes.
Yeah. Are you also looking at the FTE? Are you also looking at transportation, according to the stewardship?
That would be part of the processes, yes.
Of the FTE?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That was part of our documentation problems, yes, was in transportation.
Is that we're counting each kid?
We had, we had a number. They weren't all in transportation, but there was some in transportation that we did not have proper documentation on. So with that, that's how I looked at...
Sorry, one other question about the FTE. Are you also looking at how the charters are reporting?
The charters showed up pretty high. Charters McKay were all like threes, or had a bunch.
Since we are the stewards of the dollars coming in, and we got into a big issue with Ali, and it was a million dollars, that the state was asking us to get back?
That was a couple of years ago, right?
Correct.
Yes.
So I'm curious if that, it should be part of, since...
Okay. I'll make sure it is in the scope then.
Okay, nice.
I don't think it was in the one I gave you, so go ahead. Okay, but, so, the next, next part is coming up with the internal audit plan. Does anybody have any more questions on the risk assessment before I move to the internal audit plan?
Do you feel like it's a useful tool?
I do. I, I think as we learn more, I think we'll be able to expand on that. And one of the things that Mr. Ward gave me was some stuff from Escambi County, did I pronounce that right? Scambi? Escambia County? They do a little questionnaire, and on top of that, they kind of do the same format as I do, a little bit different, but they kind of follow the format I was using a little bit. But they, they have a questionnaire, and the questionnaire kind of goes more in detail, detail, and it kind of, I think, helps the internal audit function assess the levels of risk. Therefore, not relying on them to do it, but ask them questions, and then from the questions and the answers they get, assess whether that should be a low, medium, or high.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. That makes more sense to me.
And that would be the support. So, yeah. The problem with that, it's not a problem, it's time-consuming. They do 30 departments, I think we have a few more than that, based on this spreadsheet. So they have six auditors, I have one. So you can imagine, I got to do roughly, let's say, 35 interviews. I mean, those are going to be, roughly be, take me an hour to two, probably, between getting there, you know, talking with them, and doing the interview, and then, you know, so you can see I'm going to have about, I don't know, 50, 60 hours involved in just the interview process of the risk assessment. So I don't know how you weigh that, but, you know, is, you got to look at the value of getting it done, and how much we'll get out of it. I guess, are we going to get that much more out of 60 to 60-plus hours of, of my time? Or would it be better for me to be out doing auto work? So, I, it's just, you know, or as we get more resources, maybe we could do that. You know, incorporate the questionnaires into it over time, so that's what, but, but I think it can be expanded on, yes.
Did you, did you address the, these other two columns, the susceptibility to fraud and the alignment with district?
Yeah, well, the alignment with, just to go to the alignment first, our, our strategic directives are right at the end. I think if you go out and look at them, they're supposed to, you know, the end of last year is 2018. So to incorporate those into this now, is, I think we need new strategic directives so that they align more with our organization as it is today. So I don't think it would properly align. The second area is, you know, I, I don't think everyone would probably, I think everyone would rank it low, you know, the susceptibility to fraud. Would that be true? Not in all areas, I think in, in a lot of areas it would.
It'd be unintentional fraud, right? I mean, maybe if people aren't deliberately being fraudulent, they...
Well, we could, just, that could go, that could be a long discussion, what you just said. I mean...
If it's deliberate, they're definitely going to make it low.
Right, sure, sure, so...
I mean, it depends on what you're talking about, deliberate versus not deliberate.
I guess if I'm talking about an area that has, that's prone to error.
Yeah. Well, error's different than fraud.
Sure.
Error's not a fraud. I mean, somebody, you know, does something...
That's true. Sure, so I'm wondering where they...
Too quickly and it's an error, that's not fraud.
Where that gets captured.
Yeah. I, I think it's more looking at the area, and what, like you just said, what is the susceptibility of that area to fraud, historically? Maybe across many organizations, not just, maybe even across school districts.
Well, I guess historically, where we've seen that, the greatest risk is in the booster clubs, but...
Internal funds, yes.
That's right.
Yes.
Anything internal.
And anything that deals with cash.
Where people are writing checks, or, you know, receiving all the, right, there's just a lot of paperwork that goes along with all that, and, and so you get a combination of, you get error being one issue, and then fraud being another potential issue, where people, our people even, spending the money as designated.
But there, but there are other areas and, that are susceptible to fraud or, or wrongdoing, so to speak. I mean, we don't have to call it fraud, we get to say wrongdoing. And, yeah, we have to look at it and say, you know, what, what checks and balances do we have in place to assure that we don't have wrongdoing or fraud?
So, so that, that concept of checks and balances to ensure wrongdoing doesn't occur, is that just captured, I mean, is that incorporated into what people were giving themselves a score for on these white columns?
I did not.
So how do we factor in that element?
I did not ask that to be done, at this, at this point. I thought, I, I'm thinking it as we learn and we grow and we go forward, I think we can add, add into that. As I audit, I can incorporate the susceptibility of wrongdoing and fraud into there, and work with the department and the chiefs to, to get a good assessment of that.
Yeah, okay.
I think overall, I think we're coming out of extreme budget restrictions, and I think during those extreme budget restrictions, we were probably more susceptible to those things. As, as we're, I don't know, as we're growing, we, we just have to be cautious that we're doing the right things, putting the right measures in place to, to protect, and especially our assets and, of, of the school district. I think, I think we do a good job there, though. I think, you know, in some areas we do better than, than others. Yeah, like, I've talked about the management information system, the data in the management information systems many times, I mean, what do you value that? I mean, do we have the right measures in place to make sure that our data is accurate? And at what level? You know, 80% accurate, 90% accurate, 95%? You know, where, where do we want to be in there, if that makes sense? I think the last, one of the reports that's on your, you know, that'll be up on, for your approval, kind of displays that. You know, when, when you're looking at data and you're finding so many things that's sitting out there that are unaddressed, you know, that doesn't, that doesn't lend to good, accurate data. And is it, is it good just to archive it? Archive it, sweeping it under the rug? That's how I viewed archive. Was that right? Is that right? I don't know. I mean, that, that, that was a question I, I thought maybe, you know, if we pursue it, if we're going to continue to archive, maybe we need to get a legal assessment on that, if we're going to archive. Right, wrong, or different, I don't know. Internal audit plan. I put this together, and then I met with the CFO, and I got some input, and the first, the first couple of things, is, you notice if you look all the way over to the right, I, I have not been twiddling my thumbs, I've been actually working, so I've really been working with a unapproved audit plan, so to speak. So I've completed the physical inventory. As you know, I've been working on the risk assessment, and put that at 99%, really, I think after today will be at 100%. Started a little bit of work on the internal accounts. Those are things that each year, I don't know if I'm going to say required is a good word, but I'm, I think it is required that I do, only because, you know, it's, the state has required us to issue an independent report on our internal funds, so it's, I guess, required that each year I look at the internal funds and issue a report on that. So I'm working on that. Next audit was one that Mr. Ward had recommended that, that I do. And I believe there's some, and ever since I've been within the school district, there's been a thing about ink and toner and copiers, and, you know, it's been an ongoing thing. I mean, I've only been here five years, and I'm sure it goes beyond my five years here. So I, and, and I know, let's see, it was about two years ago, maybe two and a half years ago, that, that we've done a full contract, we've redone how our schools and, and offices have printers and relocating them or centralizing them. So I think it is a good time now that we look at that and evaluate not only how we're doing it, but also looking at the contracts and what we're getting as far as the service that we had signed for, from them, and make sure that we're getting the appropriate pricing on that, so...
Didn't, didn't we determine that, that, that initiative was fool's folly, and then we've kind of gotten away from it? The centralized...
The centralized printing?
Yeah.
Do we still have a contract with...
That's, that's the thing, is we have a contract with, no, it's, that's on bulk printing. This is where we wanted the centralized printers. And then we, we did away with all the...
Copiers.
All right.
The copiers.
What did I say?
The copiers.
It's printer.
We don't have the copy offices.
The copies, it copies and scans, it does all that stuff. Yeah, it does print from the computer, so...
Print from the computer, yeah.
So it does a lot.
Anyway, didn't we already say that wasn't working?
That part I don't know. I haven't heard that.
I would say back when the superintendent came on, that was really brought on, and she was hit by a lot of teachers to that, and I think she then said, we got to fix it, and I think she went to Mr. Wheeler and said, what do we got to do to fix it?
We did, yeah. This was a big topic of conversation amongst teachers in my, in my early days, because they had, whatever had happened when they'd gone to the centralized copier printer in the, at each school, a lot of the teachers then had to give up the printers that were in their classrooms, and so Dr. Wheeler was, was able to get leased printers, but then back in teachers' classrooms. That, that settled it down somewhat, but I think that this contract that we have now, there's a lot of concern about how it's being executed in regards to what is free, what is not free, is this the best way for us to operate, and, and is it, is it accommodating for teachers? Because I think at the, end of the day, they're the ones who are being most impacted by how this is being implemented, and so I, I appreciate this being on the audit, because I think that it is absolutely something that we need to address. We, we're not sure that it's saving them on money that we thought it was going to, and if there's a better way for us to operate, so to ensure that teachers have what they need, then we need to look at, we need to reevaluate whether we purchase, whether we lease, and that's what we've asked them to look at, is let's, let's come up with a way...
So still have the centralized printer?
Well, right, right now...
We don't know. Yeah, we do now.
We do now, just, in each of the schools, they, they have, they all have a...
Or multiple, actually.
One or two printers, some more, depending on the size of the school. That wasn't so much the issue as it was in, you know, are the policies that we have in place? Sometimes it's, you know, teachers having to request certain, there was some limits, copy limits, put on teachers, you can only, you only have enough money to make this many copies, and so it's just, the whole thing is just, it, it needs a good review, and we need to find a better way to operate, because it's, one, I don't think it's saving us money, and I think it's causing a lot of frustration in the schools, and we need to fix that.
But is the fix, do we actually, with that sense that you have, do we really need to study it very much? Because it sounds like you've got a handle on it, we just need to figure out a way to get out of this.
Right, we just know it's not working, and so we've asked them to look at what are, what are our best options?
Yeah, I think cost benefit at the end, I mean, because we could go back to the way it, it was, and I think there was...
Is this...
I think there was a big issue with the amount of dollars we were spending on... I think there was a big issue with the amount of dollars we were spending on ink and toner and, right? I think, if I remember, some of the discussions around that.
The challenge that, because I was there, and printers and paper and copying have always been, since I've been on the board, an issue. And the idea was, at the time, that we were gonna allow, we were gonna be centralized printers and get rid of the, so we didn't have to buy all these multiple toners and maintain all these connections, all these different devices. And that, I think where the wheel ran off is that instead of us covering the cost of the paper and the toners, we put it on the schools, and then some administrators would say, "You get like thirty copies," they had to divvy it up. So I think the way we implemented it right off the bat was in inks and, um.
But I think there's some questions about who's paying for toner in that, right? 'Cause I think.
That's what I was saying.
The leased printers are supposed to be free, and so it's, again, you know, whether, we need to look at the contract, we need to understand exactly what is, the contract entails. Um, need to see whether or not this leased program is the way we need to continue. And so is it a policy issue? There's just so many different, um, concerns about whether it's a policy, whether it's the contract itself, and which way we need to go, and I think that's what we're asking him to look at.
Are these your hours here? The forty, one sixty, and eighty?
Yeah, it's pretty much standard what I put on an audit, so.
And that, I think that's my question. There's no doubt that there's, this is something we need to look into. I, I was just wondering about the amount of time.
It doesn't take that amount of time. I, I don't use it just 'cause it's there, if that makes, I mean, I'll, I mean, I'll finish it as quick as possible and move on to the next thing.
Was that your question?
And, and in some cases, in some cases, a lot of these audits I'm doing, one, overlapping, does that make sense? I mean, 'cause if I got, like, internal accounts, that's probably gonna run a while, so I wanna start other audits, get, get some work going. If I can do flow mapping, if I can do, you know, read policies and procedures, things, and you read contracts, you know, whatever I can do, you know, prep-wise to get going so, so that the, so that I can hit the ground running on, on the work and, and get through it as, as quick as possible.
I appreciate you being conservative on the time, so that we have a sense, but if it's gonna take us forty hours to read contracts.
No, it's.
I mean, that's what you have here.
Yeah, I know. But I also hope maybe get in and, and understand, talk to people, understand a little bit about what's going on. It's not, that's not, that's planning and prep work, preliminary work. So that's trying to understand a little bit about what's going on and how it's.
Okay, I can tell you.
'Cause I only hear.
It's kind of screwed up, I'm just telling you. Yeah, let me help you, we just handled that in two minutes.
Well, I will say something also about the printers, though. Uh, there was a lot of things that teachers are concerned about, never case sensitive, that were out there in the central printing area.
Right.
And they had to walk out there to get it, and that's where the superintendent had made this statement, that we need to get these things closer or get them into the classrooms wherever.
Or it might be procedural, where I think they can send it, and then when they put their code in, it'll print when they get there. So I, you know, there's, it may be procedural. So you hear so many different things.
I think we did.
Until I get in there and, and sort it all out, I don't know.
I am incredibly fascinated to get to the bottom of all this and understand the truth. Because, you know, just as you hear that papers are not sitting out there, you also hear that papers are sitting out there, or you hear that this is convenient, this is not convenient, this is saving money, this is not saving money. It's, yeah, I can't wait to, to hear the results of this. 'Cause I, I think ultimately the direction of this district is that we wanna create a system that does not frustrate teachers who are making all these copies, and they wanna have the materials in their hand to be prepared for lessons. And we also, as a district, wanna do it, uh, uh, some sort of effectiveness when it comes to the finances, so. Same time, we hear, it, it just depends on the school. I'm at this school, I get a hundred copies for the year. I'm at this school, and I get five thousand copies for the year. Why, you know?
And that, those are things I'm gonna have to get information on and then visit those schools and.
Can't wait.
That's, that's where the preliminary work comes in.
And the toner and all that, when we did the.
Yeah, but I, I, teachers still are, are still asking for paper.
I know.
I mean, they're on every school supply list. At the beginning of the year, I sent in three reams of paper. So I know that teachers are still needing paper.
Probably using.
But, uh, yeah. Okay.
What happened to the charter, um, audit?
Charter audit?
It was an audit of how, of costs to the district for charter services.
That was a suggested audit. It wasn't, that was on the other audit plan, and it was, um, I think the board was arguing whether I needed to do that. So.
Oh.
Discuss, or there was discussion around, not arguing, but there was discussion around, so that kind of, that kind of felt.
It was, it was on services, but also like.
But we, we just.
And we, and we've come up with.
It's a little premature for that, in my opinion, 'cause we just literally.
And that's what, that's what Mr. Ward and I talked about. It was a little early, because we just implemented that. He, he kind of felt, give it time, and then we could revisit probably next year, look at that.
That would make sense, as we just started to deal with.
Yeah, there's still some fear of some areas that may not, may be doing services, and we may not be accounting for.
Yeah, that's what I heard, was that, like, finance, for example, like, all of our, finance people are doing payroll for all of our charters, and that's not a service that we're paying for.
Yeah, it was, how many freebies are they getting?
Yeah, and the, the fee schedule was put in place to rectify a lot of that, and so we've just now, yeah, it's actually coming up on the next agenda. You'll see, um, the approval of each of those charter schools, they have signed those agreements. I think we have them all back, but maybe one or two. Um, where we're going to be executing both the fee schedule as well as the maintenance agreement to, to recoup those dollars, so that, um.
Just pointing to Steve, he owes me a dollar.
Oh, I thought you were pointing at me.
No, no, I was pointing behind you.
So after, after that fee schedule hasn't had a chance to be out and play for a little while, we'll go back and revisit this one as a potential audit, to not only look at the fee schedule.
That's what Mr. Ward and I discussed.
But also to see if there are other services still being delivered that are not paid.
Unaccounted for?
Yeah, unaccounted for, sure.
So to speak, yeah, not, yeah, that was having captured, I guess. I don't know how you know the word.
We think we've got pretty much captured. There may be some things out there. I, I know that it was a, a lot of, lot of conversation, a lot of work back and forth to, to get in a, a document that we think serves our needs financially, as well as provide some, the supports, um, as required in statute, and those things that aren't, where they have some options as to what they wanna pay for and what they don't wanna pay for. So I think we do need to let that sit and let us start the invoicing process and see where that, where that leads.
I think to piggyback on the question of, I guess, referencing back to the suggested audit page, or, uh, there were a couple others that I remember. I think there was a safety and security one on there.
Yeah, I was wondering about that.
Again, uh, one is probably maybe a little premature, uh, at least in everyone's, at least, not, not in my mind, but in others' minds, that, you know, may, maybe it's too soon to go in there, because there's gonna be a lot of things that are implemented as the funding comes. I, I'm not, I'm not even sure they got the funding yet. If I remember right, the last workshop, you all had a presentation about the funding, right? And that bill, or that plan was gonna be submitted up to the state, and then there, I don't, I don't know if they've heard back yet on whether they're gonna get that one point, was it one point four million dollars, so.
So I, I guess, I guess thinking about the referendum dollars that will start to roll in, you know, next year or so.
About thirteen months. Thirteen months.
Thirteen months, there you go. Um, it'd be helpful to have that kind of audit done beforehand, right? So we know how to prioritize those dollars, right, to, for us to understand exactly where.
I think the margin stoman act is probably guiding you as far as how to spend that money, right?
There are so many ways that we can spend the dollars under that, right? I mean.
True.
I mean, do we need to understand where the biggest risks are?
I think that's what management.
Yeah, we'll be bringing to you, actually, we're kind of finalizing now, some budget options, um, to bring to you. So you'll know exactly, and the public will know exactly where every dollar's being spent. And we're establishing those priorities now, and so our hope is, I think we actually have a workshop coming up, um, might be to December. Um, well, you do have it on the calendar, I need to get you the dates of that. Where, and, and that will be the topic of that workshop, bring it to you, get your input as to, you know, of course, we know most of it is, a large portion of that's gonna fall into the mental health area, and how, what are those services gonna look like? Um, how many more nurses are we gonna need? How many more counselors are we gonna need? And the dollar amount attached to that, and bringing you those, and you can establish, um, those priorities. Um, and that will be followed up by developing a community committee that will provide that oversight as we begin to roll out those dollars. So that is coming, um, very soon. Do a workshop near you.
Yeah, so it'd be kind of early to do an audit in that area.
Well, we didn't, we didn't think it was too early.
I think the safety and security plans are being done by, like, Jimmer.
Yeah.
And Mr. Carr. Mr. Boy, I should say.
This, this plan rolls out for, I mean, we've got, I mean, this goes, this goes forward twelve months, right? So, okay.
Where, where is?
It wasn't my opinion.
All right.
Where's your time allocated for? Or is it in just general time for reviewing the, as we're moving forward with the cafeteria remodel?
Yeah, that, well, we don't even have a shovel in the ground yet, so it'd be, it wouldn't fall out on this audit plan. I, I did have it.
We, I think we talked about last time that there'd be some sort of midpoint check-in, right?
Well, this, this project's only about five million, so I, I think it's midpoint is too soon to, to check in. I, I think it would be better to about three quarters of the way through. So to me, that would be like in, um.
Okay, three quarters.
It would be, it would be right about the physical, it'd be about June, July, August, let's say, right in there. Let's say July, August, I would probably be checking in.
I guess I'm just going crazy, 'cause everything we said in the last time we looked at this is now different.
It's gonna be May, Mr. Carr.
Three quarters of the project will be done in May?
All right, so do we plug that in, so we make sure it happens?
We can plug that in. I, I was under understanding it'd probably be a little bit later than that, so.
I was thinking that we were talking about trying to have it ready by the nineteen, twenty school year.
So the, yeah, see, yeah, things get updated, I don't, I don't hear about. So if they're pushing it, but it, I mean, when, I mean, you figure the timeline of the project is fourteen months, correct?
Okay, so, so just help me.
Fourteen months on the project?
I do not.
Huh?
Trying to do nine.
They're trying to do nine now. So see, they're, they're, they moved up the timeline.
Even if we were still functioning under fourteen, somewhere on here it would be in that timeframe, right? Either whether it's halfway or three quarters, or whatever it is. I guess I, I'm just going crazy, 'cause I, I feel like everything we talked about last time is just completely different, and I, I'm just trying to understand what the differences are and why.
Well, the risk assessment, that was, the, the risk assessment drove the internal audit plan, and that's why you wanted me to do a risk assessment, right?
Okay, a risk assessment is, yes, the answer is yes, we should do a risk assessment. But also, there are some basic things that we would, I would have just expected. Like, you, an area of concern to me is when we're looking at contracts, and, and in this case, we're looking at the construction of Cypress Ridge.
Right.
And that, that would have been, I would hope, on your radar.
It is still my radar.
And that you, but you just told me it was gonna be June, when, when in the same building, we're not in silos, it would have been in May. So I would have expected to see it on here, Tom, is all I'm saying.
Okay.
Um, that's all.
I was understanding it was a fourteen-month project, so.
But even still it'd be here.
It can't be on here if it would actually be next year.
Okay, the truth is, it's not. No one's ever thought it was gonna be fourteen months. I mean, that's just not even, we've never discussed fourteen months with that cafeteria, ever.
So, so the contract that we approved as a board gave a latest date, I think, of December, right? That was the, that was, the latest it could possibly be was December, and this runs through November. So three quarters of that, even if we were functioning under the three quarters method, it would be on here, even if we were going to December. But we're looking at a, a more advanced timeline than that, so, so that.
This audit plan goes to June.
The what? Yes.
Oh, so the October, November on here. This is the current October, November?
This, this plan goes from July first to June thirtieth.
Okay, so where it says October, November, that's the current October, November.
On the second page, on the second page.
No, on the first page, on the bottom of the first page.
Yes, sir. We're, we're at November right now on this audit plan.
So, so I go from the bottom up. The last one listed on here is October, November. So I.
The information and technology audit.
My audit plan starts in, in July first. My audit plan starts July first, two thousand eighteen.
So the, when.
And goes to the end of June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
But what are you speaking to?
When does the information and technology audit take place?
So that's currently now.
They are currently, currently working on that right now.
Okay.
They're currently in process right now.
Okay, I, I think, I think part of it was just trying to understand the format, see, 'cause, you know, when I'm following all the months here and they're advancing, I guess I thought that.
So is there anything else, we've named three, that was on the previous audit suggestion idea list, that's not here? I can't get my computer to turn on.
Yeah, what else did make a cut?
Yeah, what else did make a cut?
Construction audit is still, I think I'm, I'm good to say that in July, ju, at the earliest I would probably start is June. Does that make sense?
If we're having, if we want the school ready in August.
Close to done.
Well, I.
I'm just auditing the, the cost of the project.
The contracts.
And, to the contract. You guys have signed the contract.
Right.
Right. I, I think, but one of the other bits, bits of guidance that we gave during that was that we had some, uh, some findings or some takeaways from the Eustace Heights construction, and that, are those being implemented here?
And I worked, and I worked with the agreement to make sure that those things were, those findings were incorporated into the, the GMP contract.
All right, so, so I guess if we're, if we're based on, um, I guess the timeline should be flexible, so that should this project be advancing that it's ready for the opening of the two thousand nineteen school year, then three quarters of the way falls in a different timeframe, right?
So what would that be, May, June? Most would move up as like a month, May, June?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we can, we can work. I can begin.
Can you clarify?
I can begin my work. How's that? I can multitask?
Can you clarify for me what it means to just, um, audit contracts? Because contracts usually refer to real things. So, like, for example, if they do a bad job on the floors, and the contract said do a good job on the floors.
That's, that's.
That's John.
That's what they do.
Right. But like, are you, aren't you talking to John? I mean, wouldn't that need to be done a little bit earlier in time for there to be something to be fixed?
I wouldn't even know if they did a bad, bad job on the floor. I mean, you're assuming I'm on site now.
So what, what does auditing the contracts mean? Just reading them?
The, the, the terms and conditions of the contract, I will make sure that we are in, we are, we are getting those terms and conditions. If we're supposed to get four percent, charge four percent overhead, I'm gonna make sure we get charged no more than four percent overhead. If, um, on the, um.
So you're just checking the contract versus the checks that are written?
That we're writing, yes.
So.
The pay, the monthly pay, payments.
Maybe I need to go back and reuse his heights, um, but that was, that was like years ago. But I, I felt like some of the, you had some findings in that from efficiency standpoint, not necessarily were, entirely was the contract followed.
I'll look at those this time.
But here's how y'all could have saved some money.
Yeah, recommendations going forward, so to speak.
Yeah, yeah. So, so I think I was looking at, are those recommendations implemented here? And, you know, 'cause we could follow the contract, but could we have followed the contract and also save money was?
Yeah, sure. And that's management's, and, and I worked with them on the GMP contract, the rewrite of it, and they, and tried to make sure that those were being included. To my memory, every one of them was included.
Okay.
When I did that, I know that's been about a year ago, but they were included.
All right.
I was happy with that.
Some of the problems with Eustace Heights was, we had one person that was involved at the beginning of the planning and everything of the Eustace Heights, and then that person was not reappointed, and then someone else stepped in and took over, and then he came in and he started making cuts and things that he thought should be, and then later on, some of those things he cut had to be put back in. And that's where some of the overhead and costs came to there. It was originally in the original plans, but then they, to save money, we cut them out, and then we ended up having to put them back in, because someone said, "Hey, we don't have this for, in our classrooms, but yet it's supposed to be." Oh, yeah, it's there, but then all of a sudden, it reappeared. So, you know, some of those costs.
Some of my recommendations were more, more on the line not to exceed, you know, like when you, general conditions.
Okay.
And we, we had nailed it down to pay, I'll just say, two hundred and fifty thousand. My recommendation was not to exceed two hundred and fifty. So if there were ways we could reduce that amount, then the most we would pay is two fifty. But the way the last contract was written, we were gonna pay two fifty, even if we could reduce it, or they could reduce it. Does that make sense?
Sure.
So, I quickly read the contract for, for the, um, caf, cafeteria at Cypress Ridge, and that was in there. I mean, it was easy to see that that was, that was in there. So I was happy, I, I mean, I didn't tick and tie everything that I recommended from prior. But just to see that alone means, meant a lot, because we could save, we could save money. This one's kind of a small project.
But to that point you just made, that you didn't check to see if your recommendations were followed on the next contract. I would expect that, Tom.
I, I did that in the drafting of it. Does, does that make sense? I, I think I said that when we were sitting down for the drafting of a next GMP contract.
But you said that you didn't see the, that you did, you saw that one item, but you didn't look at the whole document.
I, I did read through the document, but I didn't take, I did not take and tie it to all my recommendations.
What did you say? Repeat what you just said. Oh.
Which, there were a handful, I mean, it was not like there was a tremendous amount.
Okay. Alright.
But it wasn't up for audit at this time. Does that make sense? I mean, everything that comes through.
Wait a minute, what makes sense is, is that if you're working for the district, and if you made recommendations, and if you had access to the document to review it, then I would have checked to see if the recommendations that you made had been implemented, and if not, questioned why.
Okay.
That's all.
And then bring it back to the board.
I understand, but I'm a staff of one. That, I'm just.
So, so I guess, I guess there should be, I mean, I, I don't think that, I'm gonna go out and limit it. We're looking for you to just kind of poke into a whole bunch of different areas that you've ever dealt with.
That's what he's saying, you know, I mean, I gotta make sure I'm, I'm looking at everything every day.
But if you've done an audit on something, and that topic is, is, I mean, we've, we've had some conversation with this board, and, and it was on the last record, suggested audit plan, and all of a sudden, it's not there at all, but it, it was just an, an item of interest of the board, right? That we would make sure those, those recommendations were implemented.
My understand, uh, just, just from where my head was, is it was gonna be one of the first audits, it was gonna be the first audit, obviously, on the next audit plan, because I knew I had to pick that up before the proj, I, it just needs to be done before the project's over. It's five million dollars, most of the money's probably gonna go into site improvement, contr, concrete, you know, it, it is what it is. It's a four walls and a roof and, right? A few classrooms.
No, to cafeteria.
That's one room and some.
Alright, okay. Alright, let's keep on keeping on.
Okay. Next audit is the full-time equivalency audit, um, to begin about February, April, looking at all the documentation and that.
Can you explain that further?
I put in the transportation audit, uh, my.
Wait, can you go back to the FTE audit?
Sure.
What do, like, we already have. We have kid counters, we have two, right? I don't know, it's a couple of other kids, other than kids.
The surveyors, the surveys?
We have people who.
We have employees that.
Employees that count kids.
They're keeping up with FTE, don't we?
Alright, so, what, back in thirteen or fourteen or so, I don't remember, I wasn't on the board when y'all made that, approved the position, but there was some position that the board approved at that time, right? Now, does that position still exist?
I think, we did.
Right, and it's considered important, so are you, are you auditing their work? Is that the plan?
No, I'm gonna be auditing the documentation that the state was finding that we were deficient.
Wait, like, years ago?
Hmm?
No, no, last year, last year, the state gave us an audit, and we just, in some things.
We were deficient in some areas of our documentation, and I plan to go back through to see, to make sure that we make corrections, to do better, I guess, in our documentation, right?
Good, because that audit, I mean, even though we got it last year, it was like, really like, from two years or more ago, right?
Yeah.
So, things could have been.
They're, they're what, three years behind?
Yeah, something like that.
Their work, how, how they view their, they think they go three years out.
So is that timely? I mean, is that necessary? I mean, if we've corrected with a.
It's one of our highest risk areas in the school districts, where a lot of our revenue comes from, so we need to make sure.
That's the highest, in my opinion.
Eyes, eyes are dotted and Ts are crossed, right?
Yeah.
You hit your cash flow.
Day in, day out.
But I, I would think it would also incorporate the employees that are taking care of that process there that we have, that they created the positions for. I think they would have to be involved in it.
It was more than just that, it was also class size.
Right, class size reduction, we failed on that.
Not what those employees do?
Correct.
I, I worked with those, well, the, the ones that were there last time when I did the audit, I worked with them.
We'll see a scope of work before you begin the audit on that, right?
See, I kind of generally mapped it out, but, yeah, I mean.
So, so at that point, we could weigh in if there's still items of importance that we want to look at in that realm.
I have to work with those FTE employees, I mean, that, that's my starting point, I would think. Because they're, I'm gonna update all the flow maps.
So you're mainly.
In case there's new processes that have been.
So it's, it's gonna take you less hours to do that work than it is about printers?
Because I've been, I've been through that process, and I've got the flow maps for it, and that's, I look at it as whether I've been in that area before or not. I have not been in the printer and copier area. I don't have any flow, I don't, I, I generally understand what everyone's telling me, how it's running. But like Mark said, I, I know some schools are not doing a lot of copying, and some schools are doing a tremendous amount of copies. Some schools are complaining about ink and toner, and others are.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to get us there.
So. Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead, thank you.
FTE, okay. I picked transportation because the oper, the amount of dollars from our operational budget that are going there, and then, um, number of employees, those two tend to indicate to me a little bit higher risk. So it is, it's one of the top ten departments. So I felt comfortable in saying that that would be a good area to audit. I think last time I aud, fully audited it was four years ago, and I did a follow-up audit about two years ago.
So when you go out and do fieldwork and transportation audit, what are you looking at?
I'll be looking at the whole department, from routing, the, to, to the parts inventory, training that's provided, the maintenance, um, I know they're going to implement a new software, uh, to, to do parts inventory, because the Skyward, um, is not adequate for their needs.
Is that right?
Are you shocked?
Correct.
That's all they already fixed, seriously.
Parts were in transportation, so.
Okay.
That's not a good subject. Alright, go ahead.
Under special projects, I put the two current projects that I've been working on, the driver's test, uh, and then the, um, naming project that was recently assigned to me to, to do some work on. Then the rest of the areas are just normal, um, administrative areas that, that, and obviously, to make sure I account for training, vacation, and that, that, just basically to a lot for all my time that I have available.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, you skipped over information and technology, I wanted to speak to that, I wanted you to speak to that.
The IT?
Yes.
Oh, the data loss prevention?
Yes.
Yes, we're doing that.
You're not doing that.
I outsourced that to IT auditors to do that.
Why are, we just did this.
The DLP plan is, yeah, you just approved it earlier this year, yes.
No, wait, wait. When the folks came in, we hired, you hired them, what was it, two years ago, Creed? And they came in and did a data loss prevention plan. Did we follow up, that we implemented that plan to start with?
The state auditors.
No, 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 you had your guys, you, you had.
They did a risk assessment, correct.
No, didn't they do a, didn't that why you had to add the second station, the second?
That was for the risk assessment.
What's the difference of a risk assess, assessment if they say that data loss is an issue, and we correct it? I mean, is it a little bit semantics or not? I don't, I'm not gonna be trying to be funny. I'm wondering why we're having, we're having to outsource this again, is what I'm asking. And don't we also have, don't you also have, um, the Department of Education audit on technology, or not?
Um, we, we do have Purpos Gray audit, so it's as well as the state.
So we have the state, we have Purpos Gray.
What is this providing us that's different than those two audits?
This is, this is following up on the recommendation for how we implemented our data loss prevention plan.
It's looking at the work during the loss prevention plan.
No, it's looking at how we implemented it, not, not the work to develop it.
This is gonna take four weeks?
So it's a follow-up audit?
It's a follow-up audit, to see how we implemented it, yes.
But we also.
Because the state audited, and the state, it was one of the state's, state auditor's findings.
The state auditor found that they wanted to look at it.
That we did not have a good data loss prevention program in place.
So why are we paying for someone else to say the same thing?
No, we're paying for them to say, we fixed it or we didn't fix it.
We fixed it.
But the state's gonna look at it again, right?
No, the state doesn't, the state doesn't do follow-ups.
No, 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 how often do they audit us, Creed?
Every, every third year.
Every three.
That's a good point.
Are we paying, how much does this audit cost us?
You're, you're going to the, and from one of the.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the, the law, the data loss prevention audit plan, how much does that cost?
It'd be about twenty twenty-two right now.
Twenty-two thousand?
Yeah, let's go twenty-two.
And do we not have the ability to ask Dr. Wheeler, did you follow their plan and is it implemented? Did you? I'm gonna ask, did you?
We're working through that.
We need to put a microphone over there.
Why do we need to pay twenty-two thousand dollars to have someone come in and look at something we were supposed to do? And we're gonna have a state audit right behind it? Just ask him. Is that good money?
State audit will be in about three years, so about.
When, when was the last state audit?
Just like seventeen years ago, they'll do, end of twenty.
End of twenty.
Twenty twenty-one, yeah, that's what I guess, twenty-one.
I don't see any reason.
I, I would, I would agree, this time I would say we need to pull that, since that's costing us above what we already were trying to budget.
It's, it's undergoing, isn't it?
It's underway.
It's underway already?
It's underway now. I just roughed it, yeah, probably about thirty, forty percent.
Okay.
We approved it a lot, a, a little bit.
Yeah, but it was, nevermind, okay.
So we're, we're out of no win on that.
Yeah, we're done.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
No, that's a good point, I mean.
But I wanna talk about it. They're supposed, when is it, when are they gonna do it again? Wasn't it a three-year plan or something, ultimately, or not? Do you hire them annually?
I, I hire them to do data audits annually, yes, internal audits for the IT.
Okay.
But what I was.
Last year, last year, we didn't do any audits.
Yeah, I'd wait when I was talking about it, okay.
And when the state auditor's in here doing IT audits, they, they won't be doing any audits either. Pur, Purpos Gray looks at it from a financial standpoint, can they rely on the, um, system for their financial data? So Purpos Gray looks at it more from a financial standpoint.
I, I just don't understand the four weeks to, to do the corrective measure. That's what they're contracted for, for four weeks.
To make sure the plan has been implemented.
And they can't do that in two weeks? I mean.
So the hundred and sixty hours reference there, is that your time, or is that their time?
Theirs.
That's our time.
That's their time, so you're not spending any time on that?
Uh, I have ten meetings, I was in on some meetings, so, yeah, I wouldn't say no time.
So when you get to the hundred percent down here.
And I put, I put that down under the administration, I mean, that's some of my administration time.
So when, when you get to the two thousand one hundred and thirty-six hours of your resource budget, of, of your time, and that's your, that's, that's.
A hundred inclusive of the hundred and sixty hours or not?
Nineteen seventy-six is my time.
Nineteen seventy-six, okay, alright.
Yeah.
So going forward, before I submit the, the audit plan for approval, would you like to see me incorporate the construction audit?
Yes.
Roughly, the, um, I'll put it down as, I don't know, May, June, July timeframe, I mean.
I would say May, June.
May, June?
Yeah.
I mean, if, if you feel comfortable, I mean, I wanna wait until good seventy-five percent of the project's done. Basically, uh, you, what, what I wanna see is you jump in there before the last two payouts are, are completed and submitted. And that's when I start reviewing, if that makes sense.
You keep some wiggle room in this, yeah?
Hmm?
You, you have some wiggle room in your time.
Sure, I always keep a little wiggle.
Yeah, stick some wiggle room around May.
Because when I started this, I didn't know there was gonna be a driver's test project, I didn't know there was gonna be a naming project, so there, yeah, there's wiggle, wiggle room to, to start things.
Groovy. So, so the, so the naming project.
Mm-hmm.
Is this from a financial standpoint?
You guys asked me to.
Name?
So I know we've got a, a policy, right, on, on how we.
You do have policy.
Name buildings, and, and so you're.
But this is, uh, the, the ability, there's nothing in the policy about charging for, for naming, or, or soliciting for, for.
So, so this project is to go out and find out what.
What we could sell, basically.
What we could sell?
Yeah.
Okay.
Na, na, naming our stadiums, baseball fields, soccer field.
Well, I'm, I'm not in love with that idea.
Well, that's what was presented, and that's what I was asked to do, so.
But are you, just so I understand exactly what you, what the scope is, are you gonna come back and say, X number of districts do this, and here is what they charge for those naming rights?
That's about what I've been able to find out, is to look on the internet to find out if, who's doing it, what their policies look like, if anything different than our policy, um.
And you're doing that within the state of Florida, right?
I, I started there, but I also expanded just to see if there's other districts, school districts outside of Florida doing it as well, so.
Okay.
Just preliminarily, the answer's yes to all those.
Yeah, so, so if you Google who's doing it and what they're doing.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
And have, do you have any findings yet?
I do have a list, yes, I do have some information, I didn't bring it with me, I, I've actually put together kind of a presentation, I was.
So you're pretty much done with it already?
Okay.
Yeah, I would, I'd like to ask the school board, would, would, from what I saw, uh, Googling and, and reading, it looked like one school district did a survey. I was gonna throw that out there, you think a survey would be helpful information to, to the board in making their final decision as far as what the community, what the, um, staff in the school district think about this? As far as selling the rights to living and ceased naming, to, to put it out to corporate sponsors? I, I don't know, I mean, do you think it would be a, a valuable information for you from a survey?
I don't know, I think that, first of all, that maybe the board should have said, because I think you were in the, it was at a board meeting, you were in the back of the room, we said, you do it.
Yep.
Maybe we should have talked about it, because there's no way on this planet, ever, that I would sell the rights to name a school for, like, to a corporation. That's, that wouldn't happen under, I, I would move.
Yeah, I, I, I think our buildings tell a story, right?
They do.
When we put a name on them, that's a big deal.
That's right, and maybe a gymnasium, or, or a football field, or something like that.
Some of the football fields and that are, are being sold to corporate sponsors, within the school districts.
And I, I could see the athletic side of it, but never, ever, ever, because there, there's a, there's a heritage of that school, and.
You could just buy the legacy left behind by really a coal, right?
Right.
No, you can't do that, you gotta earn that.
It says some of the football fields have been, um, sold to healthcare facilities and.
So that's what, if you came back and said, we have the, whatever baseball field, football field, I mean, if we said it's gonna be sports, maybe that would help.
Yep, that's what my findings are showing, yes.
What it is.
Taverri's High School is named after a doctor, but the thing was, behind that, there was a lot of funding that went to help get that stadium to what it is, so that it would be named after him. But to me, when you start naming buildings, uh, I, I think it, like you, Ms., Ms. Cole, okay, a school that she went and helped start or something, to me, that's just recognizing her effort, her work, and everything that she put behind that. And for us to say, we're gonna sell that to somebody, I, I'd have a problem with that.
You just said the same thing I said, and he's.
Well, I know.
So just to agree.
My, my, my thing is, though, is, a, a lot of these buildings that we have in, in the school board already that are, have a name on them is because of the, the teacher that was there with what they left. I mean, the Kinsler wing at Taverri's Elementary, the Cook wing at Taverri's Elementary, you know, different things of that nature there. They, they had sentiments, like you said, and to me, that's, that's more important than the, the money side of it.
I don't think it has to be an either or.
Then there's been some problem with, um, when they, when a, or, when a school district allowed, uh, a name to be, um, used of a living person, and then after that, the person got into trouble. So they, they, they sent caution to the wind on that, I mean, just FYI. I mean, if you're gonna do it after living people, and something pops up in their life that is not of a positive.
Sometimes stuff comes up after you did.
True.
Then we just don't talk about it.
And, 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 no, no, in, in some cases, what, what the recommendation was there is that you wait a couple of years after someone deceased to make, I think, just to make sure that nothing does pop up.
Right.
Well, the thing is.
As we know today, something can still pop up thirty years later, so.
Like, at least, I don't think you could, you think you could have the Jenkins, like, I'll just throw it out, but you could have the Jenkins Library and Robach, maybe? Uh, Stadium, I think it, I think both could be, I don't think it's untenable to have both.
Okay, so, do you want that presentation to the next workshop on the naming? I, I.
Is it ready?
Yeah, pretty much, if I don't do a survey, I mean, I think that was gonna be my one recommendation from there.
I want to get some consensus from the board first before, I, I think a survey would be fine after, but let's get on the same page.
Okay.
The board on the same page.
Okay, then I'll be ready for that when you're, when you're ready for the, to present my, uh, research.
We're ready.
Uh, my takeaway from this, because this will become, uh, an item for, uh, next Monday, is to just add the construction audit in the May-June timeframe, right? Is, is that my takeaway?
Perfect.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright.
Yes, sir. Uh, Ms. Luke, are you still here?
Yes, I am.
Okay, we just wanted to make sure. Did you have any thoughts on this topic we just discussed? Did you have any thoughts on this topic we just discussed?
Uh, the only thing I was thinking while you guys were talking about, um, I, I think I agree a survey would be good. And I know you guys are talking about telling a story, and in my mind, I'm thinking that somebody that, um, let's say, I, I'm, I, I'm an artist or a musician? And I am from Lake County and, and I'm retired and I want to come back. I have an endowment that I'd like to, to give a school and a music program that I'd be giving this gift of, let's just say, a hundred thousand dollars. And that that would be a story, that would be a sentiment, that would be an impact on one of our schools. It would tell the story, but there would be a mechanism for us to do that. And then, you know, the, the, um, use of the funds and so forth would already be decided, so that wouldn't have to be a part of the conversation. So, I don't think it necessarily becomes a cash generating, look, I'm, I'm just going to name this building after me. I don't think somebody's going to, somebody's going to come forward to give us a ton of money just so they can have their name on a building. I think that they would do it for a sentimental reason. I know Sandy, you and I both, Taveri's High School is our alumni, so if we have tons of funds to give, we might want to choose to go back there. That would tell a story. So, I think to take it off the table because we're worried about earning it, I think we would be, um, stopping those people that hasn't earned it, that are, have the means to give back to their school that impacted their lives. I, I, I just feel like this would be a mechanism to do that. I think this survey is a good, I mean, I understand, but I think this survey would at least give us some more data and it's worth the discussion.
Okay. And, and I, I'd just like to say something real quick too. Uh, to me, the safety complex out there originally was named Ken Bragg.
Right.
And it was taken off because of the problem of naming it after a living individual. And then later on, things got changed around, and now we can do that. But, and when this complex was built, he went to Washington to get the funding to build that complex. I think he told me like six million dollars he brought back from Washington to go to that complex. And to me, so when we look at this, that's something that I'm talking about. A person that deserves to have their name on that complex or whatever. So, that, that's what I'm looking at. But thank you. Anything else?
No, thanks for checking in. I, I, I was, couldn't get it off my radio to turn it off on private, and my phone was on you, so I'm going to mute back up, but I really appreciate you letting me chime in this with a couple of times. I've been like, wait, uh, okay, I'm not going to say anything.
All right. Thank you. And for everyone else that might be listening to this on the computer or TV, that was not a voice out of the sky. That was Stephanie Luke, our chairman of the school board.
Give us a how long can you tread water?
All right, three point oh two, the review of the school board policies.
You have your staff here with us this morning?
We, we do have staff here this morning, so remember, as we started on this, um, policy revision journey, we're looking for the best way to deliver this information back to you. Last time, we just kind of tested the water a little bit. HR had a few policies they brought to you along with procurement. And at that time, you said, let's wait till they're all done and then bring them back. And so, I, HR is here, um, your chief of staff, Mr. Hornsworth. And his, um, department is, has some other folks that he can bring forward whenever he's ready. But he is prepared. His section is complete. And so, he's going to bring to you all of his policy changes. You have them in your note. They're also available online. And so, again, we're trying to figure out, he's, he's still being willing to be our guinea pig here as we try to figure out the best way to present this information to you. Last time, we kind of provided you the old and the new, and that was, became a bit cumbersome. Um, and so, now we're just providing you all of the new along with the explanation that he'll provide an oversight of the, or give you an overview of the highlights of the policy changes. And so, then we'll be asking for your feedback again. Did this work or is this was a good way to proceed? Or what recommendations do you have? Or how should the other departments come forward and bring their information? They're all working on their policies, not just these two. Um, some of them are close to being completed as well, and some are kind of midstream on that. So, as we move forward with this, hopefully in the next several months, we'll be bringing some closure to this process. We'll have all of our policies, um, updated, aligned to state statute, easily accessible in board docs? For you all and the community to have easy access, keyword access to all of our policies, so.
Wasn't the design that, because I went through all of these, because the idea was, what I thought was, rather than go page by page, that we were to comment on specific areas? And I know that.
That's correct.
Concerns that I had, I've already communicated with you and you went, did some wiggle room. So, we're not going to go through every one of these, right?
We are, that is, that is not our intention. Our plan was to go through any feedback that we got or anything that was a significant change that we felt like the department really needed to bring to your attention? That we could discuss those. But other than that, no, we would be waiting for your feedback.
I'm good.
How do you follow up the excitement of an audit discussion? But with policy, so I'm excited to come back to you guys.
Do, do I need to have somebody kind of hold you and restrain you back a little bit?
Yeah.
I don't want you to.
The excitement's growing in the room today. So, um, just a few things I want to talk to you guys about, um, yeah, no, the idea is not to go through each one painstakingly. Um, just a reminder of our, last time, the, the group that I kind of chunked together was a lot of our lead things that, because they, they had similar, um, themes to them. Um, this is, this has been through, uh, a lot of meetings, um, with the Neola group and, and with my staff to go through each policy. And, uh, we compare them to current, uh, double check on things, whether they align to, to statute and things like that, and have discussion what, if it aligns to current practice. So, a lot of the decisions and recommendations that are made in the policies that rest here are based, basically on statute or current practice or current policy. So, there's not a whole lot of danger from straying away from those things. Uh, the way, um, HR's, um, policies are situated, um, they break into one thousands, three thousands and four thousands, as you see. Um, the good news is, as you look at this long list, there's what we've termed internally as a walkover. Um, it, while it, it looks long and tedious from this point of view, from the user end point of view, once this project is done? For a person to know, okay, I'm classified as this and go specifically to the policy that references their class, um, will be very helpful and very informational to the public. And you'll see that a lot of them that might be walkovers. Also, there might be some slight nuances in there and shifts of, of language as it applies to that particular group of employee. Um, the, uh, there, I would say that as far as my sections go, there, we're probably closer to the ninety-eight percent complete? Because there are certain ones that require more research or they overlap into other areas of policy. So, if, if there's other, if they overlap into other areas of policy, if you feel like, wow, something's not there, where's that? Um, that, that would likely be the case, and there might be a small portion of these that come back. Or there's some that directly relate to the superintendent, and those were kind of discussions that were ongoing in the background with you guys, looking at different things like valuations and things like that, that will come back at a later date. Um, but for the most part, our focus, um, you know, instructional is a, is a good place because that makes up the majority of ours. So, they kind of, their policies branch out in both directions. Um, also, keep in mind, anytime when you're reading through the policies, a capital S for superintendent, um, uh, signifies superintendent or designee. And a lowercase s is, uh, is the superintendent herself. So, when you, when you see those things, I thought that was backwards, but.
I think that's.
This is, um, this is Neola's, uh, or I'm going by Neola's, um, standard. Um, and since this is their standard, um, procedure and it, and it comes with updates, um, this, this is the way this needs to be interpreted when in reading this. So, if you see a, a capital S superintendent, that's superintendent or designee.
Can we put a, a key or a legend at the, on the table of contents somewhere?
Uh, we, we could probably include a footnote somewhere along the line that says that. Um, I don't.
Nobody's going to know that.
See that being a big issue. I, I think, but here's, here's the thing, when it, when it comes into, it usually comes into, you're reading it and you're like, how in the world would a superintendent have time to look at all that and approve all that? I mean, I think it'll register with people that is or designee. Um, so, I, yeah, I, I think, um, as far as that goes, I, I, we, we might need a way to signify that upfront for folks. Um, but I, I don't foresee it being a huge issue, to be honest with you. Um, you guys might differ on that, and hey, they're your policies, so we need to have those thoughts if we can. Um, and the, the other thing, uh, I, you know, we, when we went through and we make selections and things during and, and looking at the different policies? Um, these are, for the most part, Neola's policies, um, and they give you choices that are within their warranty of the policy. Or if you go straight far outside of it or create your own, then they don't warrant those policies. And that doesn't mean they back us if we got in a dispute over them. That means they don't warrant them as in, they, they're not going to provide us with updates every, yes, so let's say legislative session that occurs, so. Um, so, um, I.
Wait, so wait, what is there warranty for?
This one isn't the complete set, right? Didn't we get a, didn't we, we get a group after this?
Um, there is a, there is a small group after this that includes, um, some things on harassment and discriminatory prac- practices? And also a few things on board, and it should be the last, um, it should be the last, and you've got packet two, I would call it.
Yeah, it's like packet. Thanks.
Yep, and.
Now I'm good.
These were, these were ones out of the, the one thousand, three thousand and four thousand section. They do walk over for the non-discrimination, equal employment opportunity and anti-harassment policies. Um, those are some that, that bridge on later, but those are ones that, um, they were last to be reviewed, so I'm trying to get them in as quick as I can, to be honest with you, so. And we've got a couple of things with district organization and, and board superintendent relationship there that are, are pretty straightforward, so. Um, these are, so these are what we have. Um, without painstaking going through each one, I'm, I'm prepared to, to discuss any ones that you have. Um, you can kind of see where, uh, you can kind of see a, as you examine them, where the walk, walkovers were. Um, and if you'll see some, that there were some walkovers that, a few that didn't make the cut, that you'll see whenever it comes back. Staffing, staff and dress grooming, um, tutoring, there were a couple of small anomalies that they're also in the administrative section too. But they're, they were overlooked, likely on my part to, um, include on this document. But they're, they're not any ones that are super in-depth. So, um, I can, I can give a light overview of ea- of, of ones that you guys, uh, might highlight? Or do you have specific questions to an en- in particular policy?
I, I thought we were going to do it if we had specific questions, unless you want to just talk about them.
I'm just prepared, no matter what. So, whatever you guys, uh, direction you guys want to go.
I just, I just have some concerns, uh, and I've just noted them.
Okay.
And it, to me, that, I think that would be better than you have, putting you through the painstaking of going through all of this stuff, highlighting, if that's okay with the board.
What'd you, what'd you just say?
I have some things that I've noted that I think need to be looked at in some of them.
Are you going to mention them?
Yes. That's, that's what I want to do.
Yeah.
So that we don't have to sit here and go through everything.
Perfect. That's what, I just have a couple of questions.
Good.
Okay. On page eight.
Okay, page eight. Non-discrimination-based genetic information.
In the middle of it, where it says genetic information as defined by Gina.
Okay.
See, I, I, to that, I, I think we need to take Gina out. Otherwise, everything is defined by her in this case, and I, I don't think we need to do that.
Genetic information is defined, wh- wh- what does, what does Gina stand for?
Genom must be.
Oh, there it is. The genetic information, the non-discrimination act of two thousand and eight.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just an organization.
Then we'll leave that in there then.
She's pretty important, though.
I'm okay with that. I, I missed that part. It's, it's just a name.
You wanted to say defined by Sandy. You wanted all the.
No, I don't.
Hey, but.
We spent a lot of time on it. I had to Google it to even see what it was.
It's in the policy. It says.
No, 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 no. I, the genetic information thing, I'm going like, how many times have we ever asked, like, do you have cancer in your family or whatever? I mean, I don't know, just, it was, we spent, there was an awful lot about that in the discrimination part.
Well.
It is a good point, though, Mr. Gamble. I will tell you that if you do see names mentioned in policy.
There is.
That, and there are, um, those are considered, uh, materi- non-material, I don't know what the best way to say that is, you probably know. Changes that do not have to come back, that we can just update those.
Because David Myers has mentioned quite a bit.
Exactly. And I tried to say, hey, can I just put a title there? And they're like, no.
Okay.
By law, you have to state who it is, and then if that ever changes, we just update that, and it's not, it's, it's just a small.
So, that doesn't have to come back before the board, and then change the name?
It's, it's also somewhere in the policy that it, that it could, it was, it was subject to change.
Yeah. It, uh, it does list that. And one of the many policies that lists that.
I know, but I, I don't want a lot of this, me personally, I would not want a lot of this keep coming back to us having to make changes because of names or whatever. If it's something that can be done and not brought to us.
They've thought about a lot of those safeguards throughout these, um, so I think you're okay on those.
All right. Then, uh, the other thing I talked to you about was nepotism.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think, I, I saw the definition that they have in here.
Mm-hmm.
But then whenever you go and you Google it on dictionary and things of that nature, it kind of gets you a little different, uh, more vague. But I think it needs to be a little bit more, because it doesn't really say, what, I mean, Webster and all them says it's where you're gaining, uh, by having a family member be over you or whatever? That you're gaining contracts or you're gaining this favoritism here and there. But, you know, uh, where do we stop nepotism as, as far as management?
I, I think where, and, and some of the positions that are unique in the district, you have like, um, let's say, a, a head position that doesn't necessarily have administrative duties or title. Um, you have a head custodian, you have a lead bus driver, you have, um, things that are, you know, they're making decisions though that impact the, the people that they're working with and alongside every day. So, I, I think what, what I try and err on, and as we go back and look at these things are, it, say, if you have a, a head custodian? That's making decisions on the work duties or the hours that are to be worked, if, that might likely not be, uh, defined within the district? As a supervisor or from an administrative standpoint. However, if that, if all of a sudden Mr. Johnson's defending that to a higher court, and they say, well, they're making their schedule, well, they're assigning their duties? How do you not determine that? So, that, that's kind of where I err, whether it meets that. So, to Mr. Gamble's point, if it needs to be further defined, um, then we can definitely tweak some of that. Which page are you on, Mr. Gamble?
Well, that particular one was on thirteen, and that was under administration.
Okay.
But it, it's all through the document, through each one, through the.
Yeah.
Instructional and non-instructional as well. Uh, and then it also talked about in one place that the superintendent, if she felt or he felt, that they, that it was not something that was really bound to it, that they could approve it at that site.
Okay, so, so this is a case where we've got a capital S. So, this is either her or her designee? Okay, you, you're the designee?
I would assume so in that, in this regard.
Because one, one of the items is, is a school principal ever the designee in this case?
Um.
And where I'm asking this question before, before you answer to give you the information, is about, uh, two or more relatives in the same school. I know we've got a lot of that. And historically, I've not found that to be a problem, but I mean, could that be a, um, a principal, this one says, no, I don't, I'm not going to hire him because your wife works here? So, you're going to need to go get another job somewhere else. Or, but another principal would be like, I don't care, you two come here.
I think it is probably, um, usually, I haven't heard, I, I imagine there are family members that, that are working within the same school. I mean, it's education.
That's right.
Educators breed educators, so. It's, um, I think it's a, a matter of not being either a direct evaluator, supervisor type employee over that person? Or having some type of bearing on their professional life that's of significance.
Yeah, that's, that's here, but also it says that they, two close relatives shall not work in the same school or department except by permission of the superintendent, capital S. So, even without a supervisory type relationship, if I've got a third grade teacher and a fifth grade teacher and they're married, I got to go ask the superintendent or her designee if that's okay? Is the principal ever the person who says, well, I don't want married people on my staff, so I'm going to, but another school would say, I don't have a problem with that, you know? And that, that's where I don't want it to get hairy, where principals are inconsistent in their policies on that.
And that has happened in the previous passage in this county.
Okay. My, my initial thinking is that it, that, that designee from, from the superintendent, if it's to my office and then down to the principal? Or, or if it's perhaps through Transformation Department, whatever, wherever they're making decisions on, on some type of teacher movement? Or principal AP movement, um, I would say that it could be passed down. Um, I, I guess it would be how we determine and define the designee of it. Um, a lot of times when there, when those things are going on, I'd find out about them if it was a, if it wasn't, uh, side by side colleague type thing, if it was supervisor.
But I, I think based on this policy, because I don't think we've got this now, but now if, if, now every married couple or every brother or sister, you know, one's a custodian, one's a food service worker, you know, they got to now get permission.
And at what level?
To work there.
Like, what defines kin? Because.
Well, that, that's defined here.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, and you see, husband, wife, father, mother, brother, sister, son, daughter, in-laws of the same degree and members of the same household. So, so all these people, if they're in the same location, even without supervisory relationships, now they've all got a submit, permission to work in the same location.
What's interesting is the member of the same household thing even.
That's right. That's right. So, I might not even be related, but now that we're in, I'm renting my, our bedroom to you. I might not even be related, but now that we're in, I'm renting my, our bedroom to you.
Yeah.
Me, I think the key there is that, on the grounds that's an advantage to the district or the, or the school, and certainly any of those decisions being made will be made in collaboration with the principal. And where there is an advantage, certainly we would wanna support them in that.
The only thing that's a little bit new to me is the capital S, little s. And since the buck stops with you, and you're gonna speak to someone anyway, what is, what is that difference? I don't understand.
Or my designee.
I know, I know, but at the end of the day.
The capital S.
It's coming, it's little s, right? Oh, no, capital.
Little s.
No, 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 the capital S is coming to you, and you, and you say to Chad, whatever. If you get a little s, I guarantee you, you're gonna be asking Chad, right? So, but who issues the opinion, then? You, or your designee?
Well, in this one, she could say, he issues all the opinions.
Right.
Or the principals issue all the opinions.
The capital S can be the principal, and never get to her.
Never get to her.
But she has to designate it.
Yeah, but she can designate.
It's gotta come to her first.
She can say, this is so much work, I'm gonna, I'm just letting all you principals, you're my designees, and this one over here designate, says, okay, that's fine, and then this other one says, no, that's not fine. And so, since they're the designee, did they ever, does she ever become aware that, that somebody's having this conflict, until they come speak and say, I can't believe that they won't let us work together anymore, we're not even supervising each other?
And because the standard's being held different by the different designee.
That's right. But now, if she says her designee is this guy, then that creates consistency, right?
Correct, yeah. And in, in this case, that is the intent, is that it would be, he would be the designee. I wouldn't designate a principal to make those decisions. I would have the principal in collaboration with my designee, make that decision.
Then one needs to be instructed to the principals, then, is that they don't make a decision at their base until they have talked to you.
I, if they're, in the interest of, of concerns of nepotism, I think that would be a case.
See, the, I guess the only, the only problem is, policy's often long last, go on long after the person's gone, right? So in like twenty fifty, when we've got a new superintendent, then somebody, who knows what they're gonna decide?
Well, let's see.
I'll just pick a number.
I'll say I'll be ninety-two.
They'll be here before you know it.
I think I'll be ninety-two.
Yeah, I might be dang gone, but she'll still be here.
All right. That's, that's, you covered the other part that I had, and that was about David Myers' name appearing quite a bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause, but that's fine.
He's very important.
Mr. Goddard, you have something?
Good job securing.
Well, you know, I'll tell you, one, one thing that I, I, I had this feeling as I read through all these, that's all your questions?
Well, I cut them out.
Okay. As I read through all these policies, is I was like, wow, there's nothing, there, there's not too much incredibly controversial here, I guess it's just cause it's all firmly, this is a lot of statutory stuff. So my big question was, okay, so if some of these things are, are all in statute, I guess, I guess you get in the quandary of, how many of the statutes do you need to put in here, unless the statute says you've gotta put this in your, you gotta, you gotta say the statute is this, I guess?
It's true, a lot of these are verbatim.
So, so, as I, so, you know, looking at this printed, this was overwhelming a little bit electronically, but printed, I was thinking, oh my gosh. Here's, here's the, the two thousand eight school law book that we just got, and, and they're practically the same, you know? And we've only looked at HR. Granted, this is a smaller font and multiple columns, but, you know, how do, how do we keep our policy manual from becoming this, i- if there's stuff that we can just say, if it's already in statute, right?
And sort of on that same thing, can I, can I ask if the instructional, like, having it three, well, it's repeated three times.
Because it, because it applies to different people.
Yeah, but like, they're the.
Could we not put just a?
Can we not just add their names?
I think what, what you guys are saying brings it back to us doing it all ourself again.
That's right.
Rather than Yola providing updates to the policy. I think Yola is extremely thorough in, in what they're doing, but also is a service to, I think it's a service to the, to the community that we, yes, this is in statute, but we can't just have a book that says, go see the statute. So I think it, at the local closer level that you guys are governing, I think that's probably why.
So, so it's a trade-off, right? So we know that as the statute changes, the policy's gonna get updated with that, we don't have to go in, and, and so because of that, we end up with more than we might necessarily need. Okay. I, I, I guess I can live with that, as long as it's easily searchable.
Well, you know, and that's the, that's the good thing, that, I feel like, once it's, once it's a finished product, this can be a very valuable tool to the end user. Going through it has been a blast, but, but now, the more familiar I've become with it, the easier it's become, and when you are going through this leg of it, and trying to sort it out, the printed, it has been easier to wrap them on around.
Okay, so, it's, it's funny, you had mentioned the tutoring, cause that was one of my policy questions here. It, it's actually a very short policy here, but just to see clarification, so, so if I'm a teacher in a school, and I'm tutoring a student, I'm receiving compensation, is that compensation from the school district, or is that compensation from the parent, who says, my Johnny needs help in algebra, can you work with him on Tuesday, Thursday, after school? And I say, sure, I'll stay an extra hour, you pay me twenty-five dollars an hour, and, and we can just meet here in my, my classroom?
Is that student on their roster currently?
Well, okay, regardless of whether that student's on the roster or not, right? Because, because that's another thing, right? I mean, obviously, you can't accept fees for remedial tutoring of students currently enrolled in one or more of my classes, which grades given, okay, so I got that. But, but if I'm just.
But I question that, too.
I'll tell you, I don't.
So can I go advertise, hang out flyer, my question is, can I go hang up flyers, or post on Craigslist, hey, I'm available for tutoring, and then these kids all come to my classroom after school, and I host my tutoring there?
I, I don't think we permit that at this time. But is that ongoing somewhere? I think if, if the flyer route went that way, prob- we probably would find out about it, but I bet you there might be.
There might be.
In a district this size, people doing some tutoring. I, I believe, if I remember correctly, it might've come up in one of the superintendent conversations that we were at, where they discussed the ability to do some of their freelance tutoring on campus and things like that, and I think there was a question, cause their perceived interpretation was that was not permitted on campus, which, that's correct. I mean, it's a.
So does this become permitted on campus with the approval of the principal?
Why is it not permitted? Like, I don't understand why we would stop private or.
You're using district resources for your private enterprise.
Correct.
Yeah.
But the kids are learning.
Well, but you, that's when you get into, I think, some conflict interests and some, some other policies that talk about gaining off of your employment.
You open up the door to allow a lot of other things in at the same time.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a magic show after school today. Anybody who wants five, or to come to my show, pay five dollars. But it's private enterprise, right? It's the same thing, right? It's still a business that's, and so I think that's, that's the question. So if, if it's private enterprise, I'm not.
Yeah, and I don't know what the IRS thinks, all that, and all of this stuff, too. Yeah, that's, it's a whole nother.
So this would be a deviation from, from current policy?
Yes. That.
I mean, are, are we okay with that?
Well.
So wait, we're allowing it when the principal says it's.
So the principal gets to decide, yes, you, 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 you teachers can come tutor after school and collect money for that, as long as they're not your own student, or that they're, that they're not enrolled in the class for which grade is given? Cause that's, that's the second paragraph there.
No, because it says that they can't use the facilities or the materials, so.
The last.
Unless, unless.
I think the first one is, they're receiving compensation maybe through their after-school program, and so they've applied for a position, and it's through grant funding, it's, there's some other means. If, if I'm a, to your point, I'm, I'm doing it on the side, basically.
Yeah.
ELC has tutors.
I can rent a table over at the public library, and I can advertise on my private Algebra One tutoring, but that's not using the school's facilities, I'm not benefiting from.
So, so there's, so the other piece here, this facilities use process, so, so I, I don't see that policy, that's, that's another group, right? So that, that, that policy, that's gonna say, you can't use school materials, or for.
No, it's gonna say that you can use the facility if you meet the requirements of the policy. That means, so you can rent a classroom.
So I can rent a classroom, right? Cause that's, okay, just like we would offer for any other group, who wants to rent one of our facilities.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Sometimes it's tough just not seeing all the policies together to say, okay, well, this one relies on this other one being something that I like, in order to go with that one. Okay. So, so then the, then the question is here, during school hours, obviously, that's a no-go, right? For the actual teacher. But now, teacher hires somebody to come in and give additional lessons, and students are paying during school hours. That's a no-go, right?
I wouldn't think.
Okay. That was happening at a school last year.
Oh, Lord.
So.
Okay.
So, so does that need to be in policy? You can't bring in a, a, a person, like, like during school hours, there was a, there was a program here in, in our county, where students were paying to get additional lessons.
During the school day?
Mm-hmm, that's right, that's right. So this, no, no, so the students could, could leave their X block, or power hour, whatever we called it at that time at that particular school, they can go give this tutoring guy thirty dollars an hour for some lessons. I don't wanna tell you the subject, cause that kinda helps narrow it out where it happened.
Well, they did that when my husband was at USTSI.
So.
He took Latin.
That was news to me, I'm not sure.
Yeah, so that's been going on a long time, actually, cause he did, he did took, take Latin privately at a public school. Forty years ago.
Oh. My example's last year.
This last year.
So, so, so that's a no-go, so, so we're not gonna say, we're gonna, we're gonna hire somebody, come in and, and you, or, we're not hiring, because you can sign up for lessons, you can pay them directly, you'll get additional tutoring or help.
I would not think that would be acceptable, but I guess I, I might need to do.
That was in one of the band programs, in one of our schools last year.
Band?
That, that's wide enough, right? That didn't, that didn't throw anybody under the bus, but, but there was a band program who, who had hired, who said, people can come in and get additional, OBO tutoring, right? During your X block, or power hour, whatever it was called.
So it's almost like they'd enlisted their own consultant that kids were paying?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that, that. Cause that, cause that, to me, it seems like, I, it'd be weird if you look into that and then find out, say, a band booster was paying for some additional help in the band program, they were coming in during hours, but for a student like shovel five bucks, and then get to go in another room with an OBO instructor, that seems a little off.
Yeah, during school hours. Okay. So, does that need to be captured anywhere in the policy that students, you can't, I don't know, maybe, maybe it's just a, a one-off weirdo, kinda moment, or if that happens more widely, I don't know. I guess I'm just throwing that out there because it was a question, and I, I thought it was sketchy back then. And, anyway, I don't know if the practice is still in place or not. But, but students, while they're at school, during our school day, they should not be paying for additional tutoring services.
That, that should not be.
That, that's our responsibility to intervene and remediate.
Teach them OBO.
Right.
Or get that person to volunteer and come in.
Right, that's right.
Or find the correct methods of compensating that person for assisting our students.
That's right. Cause I mean, I had volunteers in my classroom, parents would come in, they'd sit down, they'd read with kids, and the kids didn't have to bring in five dollars to read with them, right? I mean, it was just having parent, parental involvement. Okay.
And I think on, on a lot of these, cause I, that's where we had to pump our brakes sometimes when we were examining these policies, because we would come up with many scenarios where, all right, if I'm trying to skirt this policy, how would I skirt this policy? Or what's something that's been done that, and that probably wasn't following this?
I, I, and I've got just one more question, too. It, it's kinda related, cause it happens in a, a few of the policies. So, so fingerprinting, for example, for new employee, or, or drug testing, they pay that. But there's some policies for physical examinations or fitness for duties, where the board pays the fees. What's the difference?
I think if we're, you, well, one, I think you've got something where it's prior to employment, to where.
Well, the fingerprinting occurs prior, right?
But if it's like a fit for duty, and we're ma- mandating that this person be tested.
Okay.
Then I think that's probably why we pick up.
But what about, but, okay, so, so I, I can get the, the fitness, because they, they obviously are disputing that, right? No, I am fit. Here, no, you're not, go pay this, and, and we're gonna force that on you. Okay, so I get that.
Well, sometimes they're saying they're not fit.
Right, sure.
It, it goes both ways.
Sure. But the other one, the, the physical examination, that's, that's pre-employment. Cause it's called pre-employment physical examination.
Is that for transportation?
Uh, let's see here, policy, I don't know, policy eleven sixty, I think it occurs there one time.
That's administration.
It's administration, I think, does that also occur for the instructional staff as well?
Yeah, that's a walkover.
So that's the same policy in both places, so instructional staff.
Pre-employment.
So is that what they do now?
I think it's also for educational.
Do they, do they all write now? Does the board pay for those, but not the fingerprinting only? I guess I'm trying to figure out what the difference is. Right, I mean, if we decide philosophically that we should pay for these people's fees upon employment, or whether they should pay for them, I don't necessarily know what the answer is, I'm just trying, trying to understand the inconsistency of why some things are, the employee's responsibility pre-employment, but some things are our responsibility pre-employment.
Which, which ones are you saying are our responsibility?
Oh, I'm not, I'm not making a decision on that, I'm, I.
No, I was saying.
I think the policy says that the physical is ours.
Yes, yeah.
But I, I, I guess I'm having trouble, I, I need to go and see where we're giving physicals pre-employment.
I don't think.
It, in your policy, it would read that everybody is getting a physical pre-employment.
It actually says that the superintendent may require.
With a little L in it.
A little L.
Little L. Little S.
Pre-employment physical, page seventeen.
Which policy is it?
I'm looking at page electronically, page twenty-one, physically, page seventeen.
Pre-employment physical examination.
Is that the one you were questioning?
Yes.
It does seem to be a prior, it's a May.
So are there, are there?
So it would be by depart, who would be the S in this case?
That policy's geared towards ADA issues. An employer, employee who comes in and indicates that they're able to perform the job with reasonable accommodation, but we have some potential issues, they were missing a limb, for example, and it required walking, we would then, we cannot require them to take a physical in order to get the job, but we can't, at their cost, but we can't say, well, we're going to confirm that you're able to do that work within a reasonable accommodation, and we would have to pay for that as part, because we've already conditionally hired them at the time. So that pre-employment physical paying for is more related to a disability issue than So, that pre-employment physical paying for is more related to a disability issue than it is to just a normal person coming in with no physical problems and getting a job.
Okay, thanks. So, I, I've got a, I've got a question about the format too. It's, um, because it looks like, I think this was printed and scanned, right? Is there a way to, to do the PDF without the scanning method so I can do a control F and find terms I'm looking for?
Oh, man, so we can, yeah. That would be so nice. With that, Patty?
Yeah, because, because it was like all one PDF, like pure electronic without, uh, being scanned? No, yes, I don't know.
But in Board Docs, Patty, we can't scan the actual document, we can, for some reason, we can scan the, uh, the table of contents, but not the documents, so like, I looked up tutoring and then I had to go find it.
Yeah, because the, because the table of contents is not a scanned piece, that's just something just was produced straight electronically. So that's why, and you, and then if you're in Adobe Acrobat or something, or you can highlight and leave your comments off to the side. And you could, you could search, it's the more valuable thing, is we're getting hundreds of pages of policies to be able to search without, uh, just scrolling.
That is definitely a little pee question.
I thought this was one of the big cells of Board Docs, I mean, will that happen with the final version?
Yes.
Yeah.
But is it searchable in Board Docs?
Yeah, but she's talking about, she wanted to put these, these page numbers on the bottom here.
Uh-huh.
For this, for this purpose.
I think so, because you can search by the policy.
The policy numbers are all in numerical order, right?
But, but, I mean, uh, because they're numerically ordered naturally by the policy number, I think you'll be able to probably operate without the page numbers.
Thank you.
Absolutely, no problem.
That's it.
Alright, um, do we need to define break in employment on eleven, I have policy numbers, eleven twenty-one. Because we say that, you know, they have to do something after a break of employment, do we need to define what a break of employment is? Or is this just Neola, so it's good? This is eleven twenty-one oh one.
What page am I?
Page three.
Three. It's fingerprinting and criminal go, criminal background and employment history checks. So we're saying if, if there's a break in service, then they have to re-go through everything.
The break in service is thirty days, isn't it?
Is it, that's what I was asking, what's a break in service?
So if you come back a week later in a different position or even the same position, none of that gets bridged or anything? Okay.
So that's what we consider a break in service.
And, and there are, there are some things we do different at the end of the year as far as instructional employees, uh, extending the time for possible rehire. Um, and for benefits purposes, um, so we're not hitting the full reset button there in case they retire. So, uh, break in service, if they do go away from us officially, because they possibly could have become something different in twenty-four hours and done something, we, we need to make sure we're aware.
So, I'm, help me understand that, that one part that you just said there, so at the end of a year, let's say there's a teacher not renewed.
Mm-hmm, those are.
Right.
Like, we usually have.
That comes to the board, a long list of not renewed, right? Or, or just the people who are renewed?
Just the ones you, you, you guys board approved are renewals.
Okay.
Renewal.
Alright, so not the non-renew, non-renewals?
And if they're rehired, we can bring forth those votes.
So that wouldn't count as a break in service if, if, if I, as long as I'm there on the first day of, of whenever a teacher's supposed to report back, I've already been hired, re-given a position, reappointed to something, appointed to something?
September fifteenth is the drop date.
September fifteenth, so I've even gotten to then?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, um, under administrator, um, it's at, uh, eleven thirty. Um, any administrator with two unsatisfactory reports within three years or two consecutive unsatisfactory reports shall be dismissed pending administrative replacement, why, why would we keep them?
We don't.
Like, you know, like, do we need that in there? Like, like, it seems like that's a lot of keeping people who, I mean, we, we have very few people that get unsatisfactory reports, and then to keep them for two years with unsatisfactory reports.
To be honest with you, it's pretty moot, and I, whenever, and that, that's where a lot of discussion will come up in different, different types of discipline for different classes of employees and different types of, uh, you know, especially not really more long lines of, uh, evaluation results. With an administrator, if you, if you're not getting good evaluations, you're not gonna be around.
Well, that was my thought, but, so are we giving them rights in this? Is the, is that a right or a privilege, what, however you would, I guess it would be a right.
And I'll tell you, this, uh, it, this could come in, I'd have to go back and look at statute, but most of the time, when you're stuck telling them about evaluation results and being dismissed, it connects to statute, whether it's instructional or.
Oh, this was in statute, I just didn't know we wanted to be stricter than statute, because. Like, does this give them the right to say, you shouldn't fire me?
I don't think it's necessary, they're only annual contracts, so it's not necessary.
So we just have it in there because it's in statute?
I would say yes.
Alright.
And Neola has it there.
Okay, as long as it doesn't confer extra privileges. Um, oh, alright, skip this one. On twelve eleven, um, it's, okay, this one was, I think whistleblower? Yeah, it says, and this was one that walks, whatever, um, after, so somebody whistleblows, and then it says after such a report is made, so, so they whistleblow, they can't, they're whistleblowing on their supervisor. So then they have to whistleblow to the superintendent, and then it's the very next line says, after such a report is made, the immediate supervisor, who you just whistleblowed on, will ask the employee's report to be put in writing. That's how I read it. And that doesn't seem to make much sense to me.
Usually, if, if you've got a whistle, whistleblower situation, you're gonna go around the person that the whistleblower.
Right, but it says the immediate supervisor will ask the employees.
It won't always be the immediate supervisor.
I, I gotta, let me catch up, because I don't, I didn't have the opportunity to take notes on y'all's notes.
It says, I think it says that if the immediate supervisor is the alleged problem, you go to the superintendent.
It does, and then the next line says that the immediate supervisor will make you write a report on it, and I don't know if that immediate supervisor could be pulled for administrative leave or whatever.
Should say.
And also, it's all super awkward.
Or superintendent.
It should, it should say or superintendent, you're right.
Under, this one's about kids, twelve, this, well, this one specifically, this is about, um.
Twelve thirteen?
Yeah, twelve thirteen.
Next page.
It said something about their health. Sorry. Okay, so my question is, um, Jay, um, it says a student shall not be required to perform work or services that may be detrimental to his or her health. Um, so that's kind of vague, and I know that some of the policies we want to potentially enact will have work detail. You know, if the kid's like, pulling weeds is detrimental to my health.
I think under the normal scope of looking at whatever duties they're performing, I think it's, I would see it as.
I would say like caustic chemicals or something like that, that's what I would think, like.
Roofing, or, you know.
But yeah, like, we shouldn't have them be roofing, I agree.
Yeah, well, I'm saying that, that would be something I think we, we would see as the, a great possibility there, but.
But is that too vague, the language?
But I think we can have an accident in any circumstance.
Mm-hmm. I'm just concerned that the language is gonna keep, that you, you can't wipe a chalkboard because it makes you sneeze.
Because of the dust, allergies.
Asthmatic.
We don't have as many chalkboards, thank goodness, so it'd be dry erase boards.
Well, they make my hands have the income.
They produce a red.
Yes.
I'm just, I'm throwing that out there. I don't know what, what do you say, is it fine?
I think, uh, for health and safety issues, it's usually better to be more general to allow you to regulate those without having to go back and pass some new policy to be able to do it, because those things that you say about being allergic to chalk, or for that matter peanuts, or anything else, nor there's a lot more of that than there used to be, and you have to be able to deal with it.
So is it something that can be handled, like, reasonably?
Well, I would hope.
Obviously, you don't want to have an asthmatic kid doing dust stuff.
Right.
But, you know, is the parent just gonna claim that, that?
Some parents probably will, but at the same time, I mean, your responsibility is to look after the welfare of the child while they're in school, so. If this is the language that allows you to do that, then I think this is reasonable.
Okay. Okay, so sixteen hundred.
Well, can I ask a question about this? This policy and its related instructional policy had some provisions about transporting students. The, the administrative one says that the administrator will not transport students without another adult. Does that adult need to be an approved volunteer or another staff member, or can it just be anybody off the street?
Oh, and is there a waiver, I actually had that as a question, because like, I was driven home by my mother's, uh, teacher friend for ye, for like years, when I was a kid. So can you waive that? Can, you know?
Well, then you get to teacher friends.
She was my confirmation sponsor.
So then, then in the other, the other aspect of this, uh, the instructional side, the instructional staff member shall not transport students in private vehicle without the approval of the principal, but nothing requires a second grownup there. So the administrator needs to have a second adult, but the teacher doesn't, I'm not, I'm not entirely sure.
Well, the teacher was not allowed to transport the child at all, and they've come from, there have been over the years, more than a couple situations where that has been a problem. And it's a problem not only for, potentially for the student and the parent, but for the teacher who's accused of something with no one witness other than the student. And for a long time, there was no transportation of children at all without a, and there was, I thought, at one time, a written express permission of the parent to allow that person to do so, but I think that over the years, we've recommended to the teachers that they not do that without another teacher or adult present.
Yeah, our policy doesn't require them to have another person present, but the principal does.
And I would see no reason why the teacher wouldn't have the same restriction as the principal or administrator would.
And I, and I assume that doesn't apply to after school, like, if I know somebody personally and now contract hours are done.
That's when the problems come up.
So, and I've got this person, let's say I'm on my approved pickup list, right? So, so I, at school, you know, I've filled out who can, who can take my kids home, right? And I've got, let's say, a teacher I know from personal relations, and maybe they're my neighbor, and I've got them on my pickup list, after school, they should be able to, because I've given that, you know, I.
Well, I mean, if you want to allow, if you want to allow that, then you probably need to put that specifically in the policy.
Well, the policy only applies to them while they're working, right? I mean, that policy?
No, after school activities are where, have been the biggest problems in that area.
So, okay, now let's say, let's say I'm a teacher, okay, and, and now I, um, it's Saturday, and my, my neighbor's kid, um, said, or my neighbor says, hey, take my kid to the corn maze with, with your family, okay? Well, why, that policy wouldn't, wouldn't prevail at that point?
You're right, so they're personal time.
Right, it's personal time, so after school, uh, dismissal has occurred, I'm at the, I'm done with my contracted hours for the day as a teacher, and so now I'm on somebody's pickup list and.
But if you're taking a group of kids on a camping trip that happened to be your students on a Friday afternoon, that's gonna be a problem.
That's really confusing.
Outside of school hours?
I know.
Outside of school hours?
You can take a simple matter and say that as long as it's just school, uh, during school hours or any school-related function, but then you get into an argument about what's a school-related function? Is it a school-related function to take, what if you're teaching, s- s- teaching construction or something like that in a, in a shop class, and you take three kids off to work on a house you're building somewhere on a Friday afternoon? Is that related to your employment or not? I mean, those, that's the question that becomes the problem, and it becomes a problem not only for that particular teacher, but it becomes a problem for liability for the school district.
Yeah, so, so I guess there should be some parameters as to whether the, uh, you're, you're acting in your function as a teacher or acting in your function as my, my friend.
Right, I mean, you're, and your example of Saturday afternoon, taking the neighborhood kids somewhere is a good example of when it gets very confusing.
Yeah, or even if it's the school fair.
Yeah, we're gonna go, we're gonna go up to the fall festival together, put on by the PTO, um, y'all wanna come? You know, so based on that, if I'm a, if I'm a teacher under contract, even though I'm not obviously working that day, I have to get the approval of my principal before I take my, my neighbor's kid to the PTO fall festival. I would say no, so I guess I'm just trying to get some clarity around this policy, make sure.
I think we need to take a look at that, I, I, you know, if you want to, you can limit it to what you want to limit it to, but obviously, taking children off of school campus, which is the really intent of the thing, is more limited than the Saturday afternoon example, because they have to be at school campus when you're taking them somewhere.
And we don't, well, and we don't want to create a policy that prohibits people from, you know, I, I know this teacher, because they live next door, and I designated them as a pickup person, I don't want to prevent that person from being able to take my kid home at three thirty.
Don't we also have to be careful about what we begin to modify because of Neola's updating?
Yeah.
Anything that they, that we put in or take out, then they're not liable for, right?
But their liability seems kind of.
Pretty loose anyway, I get it, but.
They're not liable to update that policy based upon the changes that were made by the school.
We want kids to be safe, but we also want to be reasonable.
It just blows the line, I tell you.
I, I think you, uh, I definitely like Mr. John's recommendation, look into it, maybe see what.
Okay.
Some things, because I, I can tell you there would probably be some major issues, um, just with transporting kids on pickup lists and things like that.
Yeah.
Lot of employees surviving, uh, by helping in one another out with the kids.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I don't want to create a policy that prohibits what, what should, what's the right thing to do, right? But at the same time.
And I, and the thing to keep in mind, a lot of times when we get deep in these, if there, there's a problem, they've probably broken three other policies that are of much greater weight than just transporting.
Okay, no, that's great, um, sixteen hundred, um, under job descriptions, the way it's written, um, the job description itself doesn't come back to the board, and it, it was my understanding that job descriptions were the job of the board.
In, in looking into this, the job descriptions do come to you guys for, for approval.
Right.
Um, most districts, that's not the case, believe it or not, in looking into it, um, I, I think.
Like, when I go to, when I went to FSBA training, they're like, this is your job and this is superintendent's job, and job descriptions were definitely our job. And that's how I understood the, uh, state law also.
You understand it correctly.
I understand it correctly.
Yes. What, which, which page is this on?
Forty-four.
So it says in the first sentence.
Yeah, you act upon.
First sentence says the school board shall act upon written recommendations submitted by superintendent for positions to be filled and for the minimum qualifications, that's the job description.
But then it, okay, I mean, if, if you say that's the way it is, that's, because.
Superintendent makes the recommendation.
It's like, once the position has been established, um, then it gets described, is sort of how it reads. And the description of it isn't brought to the board.
Okay, so they're dividing the minimum qualifications from the description of the job?
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're saying almost like there's a job title, that goes to the board, but the, the, what the job is under the job title is, doesn't go to the board, and can be revised by the superintendent, capital S.
Well, I'd like to.
Yes.
I'd like to look at that one.
It's just different from what we've done.
I'd like to look at that.
Okay, and, and I think this is one that we did talk about in depth, um, early on, and I think Neola will, does have some.
Other.
Flexibility in this area and probably some different ways it's done in different districts.
Um, under, this is pretty quick, under thirty-one twenty oh three, are our athletic coaches required to be CPR certified?
Yes.
Okay, does that need to be in policy?
Um.
Because this talks about like the policy, and then it says not CPR certification.
This is something that, it, it does need to be discussed, because, um, it's not FHSA required, um.
It's Lake County School Board.
It's, what's that?
It's LCS.
I, I think it's Lake County School Board, um.
And it's not, it's excluded from this policy, I don't know if it's in some other policy somewhere?
We are, um, Mr. Hogan and I are in the process of, of re-looking at, um, our, uh, athletic trainer handbook, and there's some things in there that relate to that. If I had to guess, if, if that was, if, if every coach was CPR certified in our district, I would say no.
But it'd be great if like, at least our head coaches were.
I think what, what you've gotta, what's gotta be weighed out is, is the expense and how that's provided, in the past, it was free. Um, and then some of those services and some of those ways that was being provided, um, faded away, and I, I don't think necessarily the resources are there at the moment, we would have to reinstatate, reinstitute those resources somehow to get in full compliance with that.
Can we look at that? I mean, I would want, if my kid, I would want the main person there, it doesn't have to be every, you know, like, assistant, but, um, you have those randomly heart attacks on the field and stuff.
So in the absence, so let's, let's say you got this one coach who, who's got the CPR certification and they're not at a certain practice for whatever reason.
And, and you'll see a lot of times, the, if there's conditioning or things perhaps where it's out of season, where coaches aren't there, um, or a head coach is not there perhaps, and that's where a lot of your things happen during the conditioning.
It's almost, either you have to apply this across everybody, or.
Um, I, uh, Mr. Hogan and I are currently examining all that. Um, he, he started working on that probably week and a half, two weeks ago, so we can come back with some information.
Okay. How long is the probationary period for teacher?
Uh, full year.
It's always a full year? I thought it was ninety days. Is it, is it ninety days for staff and a full year for teachers?
No, staff, you talking about support staff?
Support staff.
Support staff, if it's in-house and they're transferred from one position already in the, in the system to another, it's three months, and if they're new from the outside in, it's six months.
Okay, and then teachers?
It's a year.
A year, okay. Tutors, I had the same question too. Oh, I still don't understand on that tutor thing, why if you teach a class, can you not tutor? Because sometimes those are the best tutors, sometimes kids just need things explained a little slower.
You, you can't take payment for that.
Well, the concern is that you're going to give that person a better grade because they paid you to teach their job.
Oh.
You can tutor them, just not pay, right? I mean, like, that's just no different than, your boss hasn't come yet, I'm gonna here stick around for a little while and I'm gonna help you out.
Okay. Thirty-one, I don't know, thirty-one forty?
Suspension or disciplinary?
Yeah.
What page is this?
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six.
When you get into our, um.
So.
Just the, when you get into suspension or dismissal over basically either one of our employee groups that are bargained, all of that, the bargaining agreements gonna supersede anything that's in this policy anyway, so I just wanna point that out.
Okay, because it has in here that I think that the, that the superintendent can super, can suspend the teachers for five days without it going to the board or something like that? Do we do that?
Yes.
Because you might not have a board meeting, that it's a timing issue that you wouldn't wanna call a special board meeting just to suspend somebody.
We had that this past year.
Yes.
She's listed around about some pretty extreme sort of thing.
Well, especially for terminations, you may have a need to immediately terminate somebody, but the superintendent can't do that until it goes to the board, so she uses the five days to get the person out of the system until the board meeting where you were able to make a decision.
Okay.
So, yeah, understanding obviously any collective bargaining agreements to proceed this, any of the policies we have here, are there places where there would be a conflict, where there'd be confusion, where somebody goes and looked, accesses our policies and says, oh, this is it, not going to look at the collective bargaining agreement to know that there's a difference? So if there are any of those differences, can we take the conflicts out of policy here? Or cut and paste the language from collective bargaining agreement, so there's no?
In the past, we have had some confusion, because basically it, it was light in board policy, but then it, they, they were not treated equal. So, now the disciplinary in both contracts, we made an effort with LCA and, and matched that SEIU's contract, so they operate under pretty much the same thing. That, that could, so you're saying make reference to the bargaining agreement?
And, and not even necessarily just specific to this policy, but in any places where, where the policy proposed or drafted from Neola is different than what's in the collective bargaining agreement, I'd hate for this policy to be on board docs, that somebody would go look and say, oh, that's Lake County Schools' policy, not realizing that, no, no, that's, that's actually wrong, because the collective bargaining agreement says something different, and that supersedes.
Anytime you, anytime that's the case, you'll see it notated in, in the policy that it'll ought to refer to the collective bargaining agreement, or it, it makes those references within.
Okay.
It says that it is not in agreement with.
No, it, it'll say if it's a, because there's a, there, it's more than just disciplinary.
Right, that's right.
There's a variety of topics, and it'll say, or in, or reference.
But I don't want even the bad stuff to be here, and at the end say, or reference. I want it just to say, reference.
Big good.
Or that, whatever language is in the collective bargaining agreement is there as the policy.
I agree.
And that goes back to now you're changing Neola's laws.
I know, but, but we're not gonna use their policy anyway.
But if it's, yeah, that's just very confusing for the public.
I think a lot of times you'll have a, like a statutory minimum perhaps, and then if, if we have our own flag on top of that, it represents the collective bargaining agreement.
I guess I just.
Our position is that our policies are conformed with our collective bargaining agreements.
Yeah, you'd think that there wouldn't be a difference, right? No matter where you look, you should be able to get the right information. But I, I tell you, if I just search on board docs and I think, oh, this is the policy, and I, I start running with whatever it is I've just read, not knowing something else somewhere else conflicted with it, yeah, I, I just feel like that's problematic.
We, we have made an effort, so for, as we're going through these, for it to match what's in, as long as that fits within Neola's format. So we can, I'll go back and double check through all those, and, and any areas where there might be some discrepancies, we can run that back by Neola and see if it's acceptable to either match it up or, or try and reduce any amount of confusion.
Yeah, I one hundred percent agree with Mark on this.
Yeah, I'm with him on this.
It makes no sense that you'd have Neola, which I don't even know what that stands for, but I'm talking about.
It's Neola.
Neola, that's my jars, that's, that's ridiculous.
And I, but I, you know, I don't, I haven't seen a whole lot of that throughout.
Well, it's good that there isn't a lot, but there, there's gonna be some, right?
But where it does apply, though, we would rather see what we have as a contract role versus what they're saying that we must have, is what I'm hearing.
Yes, I agree.
And I, I don't have those instances memorized, so I'm not, I'm not.
Maybe, maybe folks in the, the union folks, they've read through all this, maybe they've, maybe you've seen a couple of spots where they're, right? I mean, they'd be able to pick out a concept pretty quickly, right? I would think, I don't know, might be worth engaging.
I think at the end of the day, when they get to doing all these, is figuring out which ones you guys are keeping updated, and which one Neola's keeping up with, and Tom, I'm smelling an audit on my.
Oh, Lord. I actually, I actually meant to reference thirty-one oh forty point oh one when I said the five days, because this is the disciplinary suspension without pay, that is, it says it's for, so it's, so the previous one that we discussed is, is for like serious offenses. This is, this is, um, the superintendent, um, there's, to eliminate minor disciplinary action from the board agenda, the suspension without pay shall not exceed five days. I don't quite understand why we would do this. If it's not something serious where we're actually gonna fire the person, why would we put a sub in a classroom for five days? Because somebody has to be there.
I think you've got all kinds of different circumstances under disciplinary process and circumstances.
It was the right course.
Okay. All right, thirty-two twenty, now I know, I think this might be comes from statute.
Oh, yeah?
Thirty-two twenty, it's the evaluation of instructional personnel?
Page number two.
And we do go into later what we actually do, the one-third and the perform, the evaluation by the principal and everything, but the whole beginning is pursuant to state law, evaluate, and maybe this is just because it's Neola, evaluation shall be conducted for the purpose of increasing student learning and growth by improving quality of instructional services. They must be, where is it? The performance evaluation of instructional personnel must be based upon performance of stu-, no, that's not, hold on, hold on.
We're here with.
There was this whole section about how the evaluation must be based on the performance of the students in the class. That's where I'm looking for, and that's not true. Because it isn't always based on the performance of students in the class.
It's based on the performance.
There it is.
The students assigned to the teacher.
Assigned to their classrooms.
So the.
That, their classrooms, not.
The cla-, right, classroom is where, assigned to them, so it might not, I think you're talking about the word classroom. We disregard the room, the word classroom, that's what statute says. Says that it must be based on the students to which the, the teacher is assigned.
I think that whole paragraph is just lying.
What, which paragraph?
The, the performance evaluation must be based on sound educational principles, not, and contemporary research, not, ineffective educational practices. It's not limited being based, limited to basing unsatisfactory performance instructional and solely upon student performance. I guess that's true. It's just, I don't know, I think it's weird, but I guess if it's, is it like boilerplate? I don't like it. I'll just, but I'll leave it, I'll leave it alone.
This is another case where our evaluate, where team would supersede whatever this policy says.
Yep, and, and we've gone through and.
So, so I, I would almost love to see here, refer to the team evaluation document, hyperlink here.
Yes, me too. Can we do that?
I can.
Right, because that's all the, that's all the correction, there's no, no sense in reading these three pages, because then you.
Yeah, if it's all not true, well, I mean, on top of the actually not true, but yeah, only half of it's true.
But the other document's what we use.
Um, under thirty-three ten, or, I'm sorry.
I think this probably states more along lines that you're following what's in state law, not the method and procedure.
That whole section is just, that is statute.
So, so can it say the school district will follow statutes, blah, 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 period?
Not if it's a Neola's one.
Yeah. See, not if it's a Neola one?
Refer to board of statute.
These are so wordy.
They are.
That's why it's almost as thick as the paper.
I know.
They get paid by the word?
Like Charles Dickens.
Best of times, worst of times.
And maybe we can't remove, I don't know, under freedom of speech in non-instructional settings, which is thirty-three ten, it says that they should refrain from making public expressions which he, she knows to be false or are made without regard for truth or accuracy. That is super vague, and I know so many people that you could make that argument against.
As defined by politifact?
I know, right? Like, in this, in this political environment, do we really want E? I mean, the rest are like reasonable, they're like threats and stuff like that. But it's not like about the dis-, well, it's just like random, that's just like an infringement of your first amendment rights.
You're essentially telling, telling teachers, don't lie.
You.
That's what you're saying?
But.
You ain't just make up stuff.
But, but people do that, teachers do that all the time on social media.
Lie?
Yeah.
Well, I think.
I mean, well, depending on your political, on what you would call facts, yes.
Yeah, but, but, but it's what, what he or she knows to be false, or, so I could say, oh.
I know it to be true.
I don't, I don't know that to be false, so I get to make my statement. Really, the, the one that, that almost has a greater vague, uh, vague.
Was disrupting the harmony?
The ambiguity, yes, that's the one, disrupting the harmony, that's right. I mean, how many things could you say that'll disrupt harmony?
I can say I've dealt with situations this year already.
I bet there are tons, yeah, I mean, you almost can't talk anymore. Somebody's gonna be offended by something.
Like, I mean, how much are we gonna infringe upon their first amendment rights?
It's usually more blatant things, whenever you get into any of these letters, it's blatant.
I can get, I, I can get behind the egregious stuff, but, you know, sometimes you, you say something, you don't. I got a poodle this weekend, oh, I hate poodles. You know? My neighbor has one, it picks my flyer, oh, I, no more harmony anymore.
I just think this is a.
If you look at these, they're not greatly different than the professional code of conduct that you've got that have the same kind of broad, general, and they may even use the word harmony in there. But that's essentially the kinds of, if you look at the code of professional conduct, I think these are the kinds of things that are listed there. I would assume that's where they come from.
Okay. If y'all are fine with them, I think that they are infringing.
I, I, it's just in how you, how you prosecute, right? I mean, prosecute if you're, I don't know, if you're really prosecuting.
I just don't want teachers fired because they weren't harmonious, or they were liars.
You know, I, I think, I think there's a sense of reasonable standard that goes with this, and whether or not they're deliberately disrupting harmony versus they, they said something that.
Yeah, we're gonna move way beyond this board policy as that gets into head of the study, I would imagine, too. This would just be a piece of the puzzle.
Yeah, but I mean, heaven forbid, somebody at their lunch break mentioned that, hey, how'd you vote on amendment three? I, I put yes or no, and I wasn't sure, what, what'd you do? And then all of a sudden you get this boom, you know, giant debate on, on whether you should have had that conversation, and then, I mean, then you get, you know, a lack of harmony for something that you thought was, you know, innocent enough, right?
And that's when we come into play.
Yeah.
Chris, you guys say it.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I can't find thirty-five fifty.
Thirty-five fifty.
Thirty-five fifty's on page one fifteen.
Is it in the next section?
It's in the.
It's one fifteen.
Page one fifteen.
Oh, okay, sorry. Um, I have, I just have a note of shouldn't it read a complaint against instructional staff instead of a, a district administrator? Because it, it's titled instructional staff.
Yeah, I saw, I, I caught that also, you're talking about the second paragraph.
Okay, yeah, like, it's just, I think it's a typo.
Uh, it is, um.
Okay.
And this is another one that's walkover, there's complaints against any section.
Yeah, okay, um.
That's probably.
So forty-one sixty-two, it says something about them understanding the difference, the consequence for an alcohol level between point two and point four.
One forty-eight.
Two.
Forty-one. Which section was this?
I'm skipping, where is it?
What are you looking for?
One forty-eight.
I believe you're talking about letter J, um.
Yeah.
That's in, in educational materials.
Okay, so, okay, then I just misunderstood, so they just have, like, why do they have to understand?
I think it's part of just CDL license holders, um.
Because I would think above point two is bad, you know, that's all they need to know, like.
I'm thinking above anything.
Uh, point eight is.
Point.
Yeah, point eight is, is DUI in Florida, so point two and point four is like one beer, half a beer. Not that I'm an expert.
I imagine there's likely a, I, I guess, when you get into a CDL, there's likely some different.
Okay.
Factors that come into play if you're registering whatsoever.
I was thinking.
Point oh two.
Not a big trick. All right, and then, um, my second to last comment was, we, the, on section like in the back, somewhere is four thousand, it's about nursing mothers, and I don't think it's included for instructional employees and administrators.
Yeah, that's something, um, I need to go back and look at, because I, I didn't see it as a walkover.
I didn't either.
So I, I'm, I'm gonna go back and, um, and speak with Neil again, we mentioned it to him, and I can't, I couldn't recall whether they were checking on it for us or not, but I mean, it seems like you could be a nursing mother or a nurse.
I don't think there would be a distinction between what type of employee they are.
Yeah, so I imagine there should be a walkover there, but when I went back to look for a walkover there, I didn't find them.
I don't remember seeing it in any of those two areas.
You're usually sitting, don't you?
I'm only venture to go there.
I guess you could be walking.
Oh, that was, that was rough.
I guess. I would do it for us.
Can you speak, I just have a general question, can you speak to why we have a difference between an informal bullying procedure and a formal bullying procedure?
I think that goes into our, our new laws, um, probably, Springer's probably more equipped to answer that. And there's informal and formal, that process that's embedded in the new bullying reporting, isn't that part of that?
Like, it seems really confusing to me, and I, and I usually have to explain bullying procedures to people often, so all of a sudden, it's like way harder than it was.
Elizabeth is our, Elizabeth left, she's our, our bullying expert.
Yeah, she would have been.
Where's she going?
I don't know, just like, she's, but her things are still there. Yeah, so there is a whole new bullying law that came out this last legislative session that defines everything a district must do in regards to informal and formal bullying, and what the process is. There's a whole process that where you have to give the individual a form, and they have so. They have so many days to conduct an investigation into the incident, and so there's. Yeah, it's, it is very, very clearly defined.
Come on now.
And Elizabeth has been our expert in this area. She's done our training for administrators on it, and.
Sit by Chad by the microphone.
The question was about the bullying procedure, like, it's just so different with, like, I didn't understand why we now have an informal and we have a formal bullying procedure versus an informal. Because I explained bull, you know, what to do in case of bullying to people, but now, like, it's way more complicated.
I haven't read this one, so I, I can't speak to this one. I know that we redid, um, our current bullying procedure. Um, and the code of student conduct, because they used to not match, and so we have redone that. But I'm not, honestly, I'm not sure with this. I haven't read this one yet, so.
Okay, in the one we, so then, why do we have this? Maybe we need her to look at it.
I will look at it.
Which number are you on again?
I think it's.
So.
Oh, I didn't write the number. I'm sorry.
Or a page or?
I guess I'm gonna, oh, I'll ask my questions.
Okay, that might, we're gonna track. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Is it anti-har, is it the three anti-harassments?
Yeah, that, that particular one wouldn't, it would be in the instructional piece, the student services section, right?
So, was, was this a, was this a bullying thing you're referencing toward about adults being bullied or children?
Uh, uh, my eyes are starting to bleed over so much. So I guess it is the adult one.
Yeah, let me just see here, since they're, um.
I did not do anything on adult bullying, so that would not, so I'm gonna leave the hot seat.
Yeah, there's bullying. Okay, it's definitely under, on page eighteen in the second part, page two.
With, I mean, you're in the, uh, packet two.
Yeah, it's in packet two.
Okay.
Under investigation and complaint procedure. Yeah, then there's, okay, page twenty-three, there's the informal complaint procedure, which is like a page, and then the formal complaint procedure, which is like a page or so. So why do we have the two? And I think this is one that is walking. Across.
It is.
Yes, it's progressive. It's not resolved.
Yeah, they, we, we came, the informal and formal procedure was part of the regular stu-, um, harassment complaints from years ago. And it was adopted to have a, that procedure so that those who did not want to make a formal complaint and. May, I mean, a lot of people specifically, and the bullying policy was attached to the harassment policy. People come in and make complaints about harassment, don't want to have their name investigated. They don't want to have people asking other people whether they did something or didn't do something. So they, we have allowed for the informal procedure where you can just come in. And essentially what it is, it's an investigation with the end result being, do you, here's what we think ought to be done, do you agree? And both parties, the complainant and the, and the person who was complained against, both agree, enter it into writing and it's over with. Or the complaining can say, no, I, that's not really what I'm, that doesn't make me happy, that's not what I want, I want something else to happen. So then they file a formal complaint, which is a written complaint, and it's investigated just like any other written complaint. And then the result is the administration's result, subject to whatever appeal process. So, that wasn't, that informal formal wasn't initiated because of the bullying. It's always been there as part of the general harassment policy. And it was, the bullying was kind of added to that policy, I believe.
So did Neola add it? Or did we add?
I don't know what Neola is, though. No, I think we had a harassment policy before that.
Our, but our old harassment policy is fourteen pages long also.
Yeah.
And that's, that's what I was asking, because it sounded, you were so articulate, I figured we already had one.
Yeah, we did.
Is this Neola's or is this ours?
Yeah.
This is, this is ours, but it.
Like numbered.
Oh, it's definitely got a Neola number on it.
Oh, this, no, 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 all of ours are gonna have, follow their numbering system.
True.
This is, this is Neola's, but it, I mean, if you read through it, I mean, it's step by step tells when it doesn't circumvent certain processes and rights. And it can elevate at any time. I think part of the goal is to settle it at a lower level through agreement of both parties, like Mr. Johnson was saying. So, it took me a little while to digest this one and understand it. That's why it was in section packet two.
Yeah, it took, it, I'm still digesting.
So, yeah, it's, it's interesting.
Is it, is it effective? I mean, because if the two parties have to agree to something, then that person's not anonymous.
If two parties, right, the, generally in those in, informal investigations, the administrator keeps the, it to the complainant and the complainer.
Oh, so there's a mediator that keeps the complainant anonymous?
They, the, the administrator acts somewhat like a mediator. They try to get the two parties to agree, okay, you, you think this happened and you say it didn't happen. What do we do to resolve the problem? And it's an effort to do, I mean, it, it works a lot of times.
Okay. Okay.
There's instances where their interpretations are both correct, depending on their viewpoint.
Thank you.
Is that all?
That's all.
So, I, I got.
Wasn't that enough?
I got one more question. It's not specific to any policy, but, okay, so, uh, it became apparent to me through all this that I don't think we've had any of our attorneys read through all these, right? So, right? Have you read through all, have you read them all?
No, I have not read through all of them. It is, it will be my goal to do that, because if we're gonna adopt these, I'm gonna, to be familiar with the new changes.
Great.
Get some coffee.
I mean, I think we're trying, he, he, I would imagine you'd have close to finished product that you would evaluate, correct?
Yes.
Oh, okay, all right. So before we approve, every, every word will have been read by one of our attorneys, so they'll, uh.
I'd start reading now, that way I wouldn't have to read all of them at once.
I'm just wondering, you know, because, because if we just take Neola's stuff, and, and we've found a couple of things that already were, you know, raising some eyebrows on, the more you dive into it. And the more somebody with an actual legal background or expertise looks at it, there might be some other things.
And a lot of it, as you all already said, are just, are copying the, the statutes.
Yeah. So that, that'll be.
And some of these policies are gonna be different than we had before. I, I know that Chad has gone through everything to make sure that we've carried over everything, but.
Yeah.
I mean, there's gonna be a, a time period where it's going to be a little different enforcing the policies or administering the policies. But that's gonna happen no matter what changes you make.
Sure, I, I think the little bit of comfort you get now, at least in the existing policies, is that they've been looked at by a school district attorney at some point. I mean, even the policy's ten years old. Ten years ago, somebody looked at it at the time. That was from the school district. But now we've got this other organization giving us all these policies, and we're gonna approve them because they sound good, but.
They, some of them are attorneys also.
And, yeah, when you talk to the organization, they've got some attorneys, uh, also that they use.
And the LCA and the SEIU, have they been part of this process at all?
So, uh, how do, how do we get them involved at this point? Like, it'd be a good reference for them to say, hey, here's a contract issue, you know, because they know that better than I do. Right?
I mean, if they wanna submit concerns about current, current board policies, and we address those and look at them, that's fine, but that's kind of. You guys authority mixed with what we usually do bargaining contracts, so I don't know. I mean, these are your policies, not negotiated policy.
Well, it just seems to me like that, that it could circumvent some issues, because they're gonna be keener about taking care of their folks. You know what I'm saying? Like, they know what we've agreed to, and if that, Neol, Neola, if they disagree, then we make the change, right, or no?
Yeah, but I know that our expert here on both of those contracts, as he's developing the policies or going through them with Neola, he's looking for anything that contradicts our contract, and so I.
But then you're finding it and saying, but then he finds it and he says, we're just gonna sort of ignore it and follow the contract.
No, it references there through Neola's policy. If it's something that's bargained, then it, it's referenced in the policy.
But to what, not to go all the way back and recapitulate this whole thing, but, but what, what Mr. Dodd said, and I one thousand percent agree with. Is the policy should match the agreement, the collective bargaining. You shouldn't have something that says, here's our board policy, now see reference number something.
No, I agree, because that's what we've had in the past.
Yeah, well, we don't want that again.
No, I know, and, but I think a lot of what you're gonna see in policy is, we're following statute, this is our policy. And to specifically see how that's done, if it's gonna vary from one bargaining unit to another, it's gonna tell you to reference the act of collective bargaining.
And this wasn't meant as any disrespect to the work you're doing.
No, trust me, I, I.
It's just a, I, I interpret this as, there's a lot of words in the second set of eyes that's going, oh, by the way, this, this conflicts with our collective bargaining agreement.
I mean, just like, just so it catches that Christie night, and she's no expert with stuff, but there was some good stuff.
Thank you.
I mean, that's, I appreciate you guys' input as a board on the policy. It helps.
It's a lot.
Um, Mr. Chairman, who? I keep knocking into this. Mr. Farnsworth, is, the anti-harassment policy, is that one of the ones that was for discussion today?
Um, if they chose to discuss that.
Oh, okay. Well, I had a comment about it. I didn't know whether to make it today or at a later time.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
You got more.
Well, it's the anti-harassment policy. It's on page eighteen, starts on page eighteen of the second packet. And I just wanted to point out, this is the one that identifies what a disability is. And what, just where discrimination should not occur. Um, and it has, defines it as prohibition against discriminatory harassment on the basis of race, color, national origin, sex, parentheses, including sexual orientation. Transgender status or gender identity. And it goes on to talk about disability, religion, and other protected classes. Uh, I need to advise you that I think that it is a liability issue to include sexual orientation and transgender status in a protected class. They are not protect, those classes potentially increase the board's liability from cases claiming a violation of some discrimination on their basis. Um, at the moment, neither sexual orientation or transgender status or gender identity is a protected class. As a matter of fact, the most recent, um, uh, information I've got from the department in Washington that deals with this topic. Is that, um, the current administration is not going to pursue any claims for discrimination on these bases. Uh, about four or five years ago, when the Department of Education came out with its first bullying, I think it was the first bullying policy that they insisted on. They included this language in their policy and wrote a couple of letters to me saying that we had to change the policy. Our policy to reflect this, this status. I told them, no, we don't. And we had never done that before, I don't think. I don't believe there's been a change since then, so. I point this out merely to tell you that anytime you add a term, phrase, condition to what is a protected class. Um, you add potential liability to the board from a claim being made under that particular topic, so.
What about HIV/AIDS and sickle cell?
Ma'am?
HIV/AIDS and sickle cell?
Are disabilities.
Right.
They're defining disabilities, and they are disabilities. The, the, the transgender sexual orientation, gender identity comes out is because the law says that you can't discrimination on the basis of race, color, national origin, sex, or disability. Um, this is in addition, a definition of what discrimination based on sex is. And in it, it includes sexual orientation, transgender and gender identity, which is, the, the law does not say, the Civil Rights Act does not say that those are protected classes. Um, they're a definition of a protected class, which include terms that, and don't, don't get me wrong. The school district deals with these issues under, under students and employees in this class all the time. They do that on a case by case basis and always have done that very successfully. What I'm talking about is looking forward in the future, adding a protected class before the courts and the government say it's a protected class merely increases liability. That's all I'm looking at trying to avoid.
So we need to strike what's in front of us there?
My recommendation is to do that, yes, sir.
Timeout. The, the transgender status or gender identity, that's Neola's. That was in the one from Neola. Is that correct?
That's correct.
We added the sexual orientation. So the transgender and the, um, gender identity are the, in the Neola.
This, this is how Neola's currently.
No. Okay, so board members, here's the deal. I had the sexual orientation added. And I did it because, um, when we went through issues before you guys came on the board with the Gay Straight Alliance and that kind of stuff. And meeting with those groups, and a large number of, happened to be, I met with five different groups. And they only asked that we say in writing, sexual orientation. Doesn't seem like a big deal, because we're not gonna discriminate anyway, right? And this will meet a large group of our employees, which is what we're talking about, and will say very clearly, we're not going to discriminate. Now, I didn't add the part of, I said, put the sexual orientation in that paragraph. So, I can't speak to the transgender or the gender identity component to it. But I also would say that, that as a district, I'm very proud of the fact that we don't discriminate, and so let's say it. That's all. End of the story for me.
Okay.
I like, I mean, I, I think that's wonderful. I think we don't discriminate, we should say it.
Merely advising you when I have to. I never expect, I never expect, I never expect y'all to take my advice.
Are there, are there many other things that you would never discriminate against? Hair color, length of fingernails, shoe size. Where does all that get captured, right? It doesn't. So.
There is a, a dress code policy in here.
Yeah, well, your shoe size. We don't like people with big feet, right?
No, that's in that gender information thing, that big feet run in your family, so therefore.
Your, your hair color.
Oh, and your Gina, and your Gina.
We don't, we don't like, we don't like people with blue eyes, eye color, right? That, that's not all in here.
It kind of is under Gina, actually. It actually is.
Tell me what, what line here.
Not there, not in this particular policy.
Right, so what I'm saying is that, no, but in terms of. I don't know, I'm, I'm inclined to say, to go with what the, the legal definition is currently, and as that changes, then we, then we change it. I mean, we wouldn't discriminate against, discriminate against somebody who has blue eyes, because it's, it's not in here. But we wouldn't add that. I mean, you can come up with a million different personality characteristics that we would discriminate against somebody, guys, because of. So where does, where does that end? We don't discriminate against, discriminate against people who have dogs at home, instead of cats, or.
No, maybe we should.
Or.
Okay.
Or.
This is, this is, um, this is a statement to, I mean, not hypothetical about blue eyes or big feet or long hands. This is, this is a group of our employees that have in the past felt that they were discriminated against. And sexual orientation, it's been a con, it's been a topic, and I think that we need clearly say as a district that we don't discriminate. So, I'm, I'm the one that's been the advocate of this, and, and, um, I would ask y'all to support me and keep it in the language of.
I'll support you.
We're not taking the consensus, yeah.
There you go.
Thank you.
Waiting for the lawyer to say that.
I always.
I didn't have a chance, yeah. Thank you, Sam.
All right, anything else?
No, sir, not for me.
Board members, we're at board member comments, Mr. Mathias?
With the hour, I'm good, except to remind everyone to come out next Sunday to the Renaissance Fair, because Dr. Weiskopf and I, who, we were voted the number one and two best volunteers out there.
By who?
By ourselves.
Um, I think everyone in this room will, because I think you're all very active, but anyone that's listening, please vote tomorrow.
Well, um, I had a chance to bring our concerns before the City Council of Claremont regarding the, uh, the charter school, and, um.
Yeah, they were loving you.
I think, I think they were well received by, by most, that understood that we, as a school district, had nothing against the city of Claremont, we were not attacking them, that they understood perfectly that we were, uh, clarifying, clarifying that, um, we had an issue with their presenter, their applicant, and the misinformation and lies that they told to get their application approved. Um, so, I mean, um, I think that, that remains clear to this point, that, that we don't have any issue with Claremont, it's, it's the applicant that went before them and lied. Uh, that being said, I know that they've, uh, the applicant has riled up a little bit of a, trying to get an email campaign going, uh, to the public, uh, email your Lake County School Board members that, you know, allow them to, make sure they, they support your, your students' right to choose where to go to school, and, and that's not what this is about. I mean, we've, we've approved, we've, we've approved charter school after charter school, uh, if, they, they present themselves honestly, you know, but, um, I, I don't think, I think the folks who, who, I don't know that will get very many email messages, uh, because I saw it on their Facebook last Tuesday, and it's been a week, I haven't gotten one yet, but I don't know if they're emailing the rest of you, but, um, the issue is not about denying students' options for choice, it's about, just tell the facts when you go in to, to present, that we don't have students sitting on the floor, we have enough desks and chairs for them, you know, just tell the truth.
All right, uh, just want to make another announcement, though, to go along with Mr. Mathias, don't just go out there Sunday, uh, actually, the Renaissance Fair is going on this coming Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, to support that, and go out and do that, it's for the education, foundation is doing this, and they have a lot of volunteers out there, and, uh, the money that comes from that helps supports our students and teachers in, in Lake County schools, so we appreciate that.
It's just Saturday and Sunday, is it just Saturday and Sunday this week?
Is it just Saturday and Sunday this week? I thought it was Friday, too.
No, it's just Saturday.
Just Saturday and Sunday? Okay, I'm sorry, if you go out there Friday, you're gonna be based out. Sandy was there last Wednesday and Thursday trying to set up the cooking equipment, so, and it was done successfully. Uh, the other thing is, as has been said, tomorrow's vote, in my understanding, over four million people have already voted in the state of Florida, so that's good, so, uh, get out and vote. Uh, okay, yeah, usually we do this in, don't we?
I know.
No, you can't talk, okay, go ahead, superintendent.
I'm just gonna assume by the fact that we are closing the meeting that you had no questions on the policies for procurement, which were also in your packet, is that a, is that a correct assumption? Okay. Okay. All right, great, I just wanted to make sure we mentioned that, so I'm guessing that this, it seemed just from the conversation that this process worked fairly well, you had the policies well in advance, you had a chance to go through them, and so if this met your needs, um, then we'll continue down this path, bringing you the next sections as they're completed, does that work? Okay, and, uh, just one thing I wanted to mention is, if, because I'm not sure that the board knows, that, um, our good friend, Mr. Tibbetts, uh, Dr. Tibbetts, um, had open heart surgery unexpectedly last week, um, he is in ICU over at Waterman, um, I know Ms. Luke had a chance to visit him, I did as well, and, um, so please keep him in your prayers, his daughter's been keeping us updated, he hopes to be out of ICU soon, but he's got a little bit of road to recovery ahead of him, and so I, I know he's a good friend to us as a board, and so we just, um, keep in our thoughts and prayers.